Okay. Welcome to the Lincoln City Council Meeting of March 28, 2022. In accordance with LB 898, please be advised that a copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted at the back of the chamber by the northwest door. Let us all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a brief period of silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The order of business of the City Council is as follows. The clerk will call the items listed on the agenda under public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on an item should come forward after the clerk reads that item. The applicant and those in favor should speak first, then those opposed. The applicant may then make one short rebuttal. Each speaker should begin by stating their name, address, and whether you're speaking in favor of or in opposition to the item. Testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker. After all public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading. On the second and last Mondays of the month, immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on any issue not on the agenda for that date nor plan for a future agenda. Will the clerk please call the first item of business?
Our first item of business for Monday's City Council Meeting, March 28, 2022, is our consent agenda, Sections 1 and 2.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak on any of these items for 1 and 2? Is there anyone that would like to speak on any of these items for 1 or 2? Okay, seeing none, let's go ahead and move on.
We can vote on these items. Item 1A is Investment Activity Report for Quarter Ending February 28, 2022, introduced by McGinnis.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilman Beckius. Any discussion? Seeing none, may we please call the roll.
Raybold?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Items 2A and 2B was introduced by Shob.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilwoman Washington. Any discussion? Seeing none, may we please call the roll.
Ward?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. We can now move on to our Section 4 Public Hearing Liquor Resolutions. I'll be calling items 4A and B together. Application of Blazin' Wings, Inc., doing business as Buffalo Wild Wings for a Class I liquor license located at 8701 Andromant Drive, and the related manager application of Ronald C. Johnson. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you really believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Tim O'Neill, I'm with O'Neill Heinrich Law Firm, 800 Lincoln Square, 121 South 13th Street, here on behalf of the applicant, Blazin' Wings, and Blazin' Wings. You know it more likely as Buffalo Wild Wings, and this is simply a change of ownership. You have the same great staff at each restaurant and same great service and food, so I'll prolong it longer and just ask if you have any questions.
Are there any questions from the council? Okay, seeing none, thanks so much. Is there anyone else here that would like to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on.
I'll be calling items 4C and 4D together. Application of Blazin' Wings, Inc., doing business as Buffalo Wild Wings for Class I liquor license, sorry, located at 1328 P Street, and the related manager application of Catherine Zimmerman. It's okay.
We saw it too.
So this is also a change of ownership. So, if you have any questions.
Any questions from the council? Okay, seeing none, thanks so much.
Thank you.
I'll be calling item 4E, Application of Poor Craft Beer and Spirits LLC, doing business as Poor Craft Beer and Spirits to expand its Class CKG liquor license for an addition of an outdoor area measuring 10 feet by 20 feet at 4400 South 70th Street, Suite 100. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you really believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you.
My name is Tim Olker King. I'm the co-owner of Poor Craft Beer and Spirits on 4400 South 70th Street, Suite 100, and we're applying for a small outdoor seating area that's going to help us offset some of the losses that we get during the spring and summertime and give a nice, comfortable place for our guests to enjoy the outdoor weather. Any questions?
No, sir. Okay, seeing none, thanks so much. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none.
Mr. Chair, seeing no one else coming forward to speak on these items, I'd like to move approval of items 4A through 4E.
Second. Moved by Councilman Shob, seconded by Councilman Beckius. Any discussion? Seeing none, may we please call the roll.
Beckius?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. We can now move on to Section 5 Public Hearing Resolutions. Item 5A is Approving the Consultant Agreement with GRM Information Management Services for Professional Assistance in Automated Permitting and Licensing Application.
Good evening. Elizabeth Elliott, Director of Lincoln Transportation and Utilities. And with me here tonight is Abby Ecker from Information Services, Project Manager. Before you tonight is a contract for a new permitting system. We've had our current permitting system for decades. Back in 1997, it was Permits Plus, eventually bought out by Exela, and we've been using that ever since. Our current system consists of multiple contracts and licenses across multiple departments, and there are contracts for the overall system, but also contracts with third-party for support, and we also have to have the internal infrastructure and server support for that. Our current costs include annual license, maintenance, support, and infrastructure, which totals nearly $1 million annually. This system has to be strong enough and robust enough to process nearly 80,000 permits and licenses and $17 million in revenue across four departments. And this is where so many of our residents do business daily with the city. This new system will greatly improve our customer service experience and will save them time, which in the end saves them money. It will also save city staff time and make things a little easier and quicker so we can process the permits and licenses faster. Although the main purpose of this system is permits, this system is more of a workflow system, so it's more robust and we're able to expand it. I think eventually all city departments will be using it for workflows, anything from annual evaluations to other contract-type purposes. So ultimately, I think this is a win-win for both the community and the city. This is a 12-year contract proposal. It's three, four-year terms, so it would have to come back up for a four-year renewal. There is a 2.6 one-time development implementation fee, and then the annual enterprise license of $360,000. So within three years, we will have gotten our return on investment. I think this is going to be a great program that will, I think, be welcomed by our developer community and anybody else who goes and does permits on a regular basis. So that's the basics, but if you have any technical questions, Abby is the expert in that, and I will defer completely to her. So if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Councilwoman Raybold?
When do you hope to go live?
I'll let Abby.
Sure. So this is about an 18-month project that, of course, takes probably the last three months of that project, just with getting everybody comfortable, training up customers. So I think that's a pretty safe timeline for us right now.
Not soon enough.
Right.
Any other questions? Councilman McGinnis?
One, on number three in here, you said work required to refactor the processes outlined in the RFP. Best-known vendor architect for an end scope shall not, or shall be included in the cost? What do you mean by that?
Right. So whenever we went through the RFP process, what we did was we basically took a footprint of our system right now. So the teams all worked to basically put every one of those processes in the system in a diagram, and we gave those diagrams to the vendors to consider, just so they could get a sense of what the entire scope was. So now, moving forward, we know that we're moving away from that old system and into a more modern and streamlined workflow process, which means basically taking those workflows and figuring out, are there three that make sense? Is one workflow? Do we need to consolidate? Are there steps that need to be updated, maybe things that were manual steps before in the automated process? So that's really what we're doing. That's all included in this contract.
What we didn't want to do is take our paper process and then just say, here, we're going to do this in the electronic process. We wanted to be able to rethink them and see if there's a better way to do it. And yet, I will tell you, you picked the one clause that we went back and forth with the company, getting the right verbiage to make sure it made sense, so it's, we should have worded it maybe a little better.
Oh, yeah, it sounds good. You can stay agile on this and move it from side to side or be able to work with it. I have one more, if anybody else. It's a pretty healthy implementation fee, and that takes, what, 12 months, you think? Or, yeah, is where a lot of the hard work is set up at the beginning, right?
Right. I mean, truthfully, for this project, we're doing a lot of work even before that implementation starts. That's a lot of the research to make sure we have all of our pieces kind of set in front of us, about an 18-month implementation. I think, truthfully, maybe about 15 months of those are really firmly placed in development. Then we've got a couple, you know, three months after that, just to get everybody comfortable.
If something happens, then do we have any ownership of this, or how do we move forward?
So what we will be doing is we will be keeping our current system running at the same time. We're not going to just completely shut off our current system, and actually, we will have one renewal for that to get us through this 18-month implementation process. As always with any contract, if they're not fulfilling what we have, we can always cut ties, and depending on where we're at, withhold payments if we have to do that. This company is currently in the process of doing a project with the state of Nebraska, and so, and they previously did a project, a small project, with building and safety. So it is a company that we've had some experience with and are comfortable that we'll be able to work through any of the hoops, but you're right, it is a very large, very important system, and we want to make sure we get it right. We did go through a very, very long RFP process. This was laid out much like the SEGA system, where it was multiple phases, and they actually had to develop something for us as part of one of the RFP phases. That way, we could actually see, one, how they worked with the end users, the SMEs, listening, and did they take what they learned from that, and then they actually did a mock-up, an actual system. Obviously, they only did three different small permits, but at least gave us an opportunity to work with them and then see how they put that together.
One other, no, I'm excited that this will really step up our interaction with the customers and the people, citizens of Lincoln that use these systems. It will make it a lot more simple and...
It will, and faster. It'll get through, and they'll be able, the customers will be able to see on the website the status of their permits or license. They can see what department it's at, who's working on it, and if there's any questions or issues that maybe one of the city departments highlighted, it'll be right there in that system.
I could use the main word we all like, trans, be more transparent.
And they won't have to make 100 calls. They can just log in and see it right there.
Wow.
So it'll be exciting, and like I said, it can't happen soon enough, but we also want to take our time and get it done right.
Thank you.
Any further questions, Councilwoman Washington?
I want to, this does sound really exciting. I like the idea that it's almost a one-stop, almost a one-stop shop.
Yes.
I don't want to oversell it, but you did, I just wanted to acknowledge that I had a question, but you answered it already when you told us what the return on investment period was going to be, because there is that sizable upfront, and so it was good to see that in three years, we will have paid for that and moved on. And so this is a lot less, the annual cost is a lot less over time than what we're paying right now, and I appreciate your work on making sure we had those savings.
Thank you.
Any further questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this item? Anyone else that would like to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on.
I'll be calling item 5B, Approving Conservation Easement Agreement between the City and MNC Ventures LLC to preserve the floor storage capacity in property generally located at First and A Street.
Tim C., Assistant City Attorney, 555 South 10th Street. What you have before you tonight is a conservation easement as part of a development at approximately southwest First Street and west A Street. Put it up here on the Elmo quick. This project was originally approved back in 2003 as part of a community unit plan to allow for multifamily housing project. It has since changed a couple of times. In 2021, it was approved as a townhome development as part of the approved site plan. There's a required conservation easement, which you will see here in the dashed area. The rest of the site is this parcel here that comes all the way down to west A Street and over to southwest First Street. As part of state statutory requirements, these conservation easements can only be approved after they're accepted by the governing body of an entity, something such as the city. So that's why it's before you tonight. It was considered by the Planning Commission for conformance with the comprehensive plan. They recommended approval of it, and so it's before you tonight for your consideration and hopefully approval. And then, once that's completed, it will be signed and recorded with Register of Deeds. I'd answer any questions.
Any questions from the council? Councilwoman Washington?
Mr. C., thank you for your explanation for why it took so long to get this one resolved. Who is going to manage the conservation easement?
I believe Watershed Management will be at least watching over that conservation easement. It's really a, this entire lot is actually in the floodplain, and so this conservation easement is primarily to, it was originally stated to preserve a tree mass, but it will also be in place to allow for continued flood storage capacity within the conservation easement area.
Okay, and in their, in Watershed Management's monitoring of this easement, how often will they go out and take a look at this? Is this going to be a complaint-based monitoring program where they won't go out unless someone says, I think they built something?
Yeah, you know, I don't get to do this very often. I'm going to defer to Tim Zock, who's here with Watershed Management.
Thank you.
Yeah, Tim Zock, Transportation and Utilities, Watershed Management. We inspect our conservation easements every four years on a rotation, so we'll be out there looking to make sure they're meeting the terms of the easement.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Any further questions from the council?
No.
Seeing none, thank you both so much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on.
I'll be calling item 5C, Approving the Agreement Between the City of Lincoln and Community Crops to Operate an Urban Garden at the West End of Peter Pan Park, generally located between 30th and 32nd Streets and Apple and W Streets, and at Gear Library on the east side of the property connecting to Normal Boulevard.
Good afternoon, Lynn Johnson, Lincoln City Library, Lincoln Parks and Recreation. I apologize.
Now we're your goal. Now we know what you're doing.
Lynn Johnson, Director of Lincoln Parks and Recreation. I apologize.
And I'm Tracy Glass. I'm the Assistant Director for Lincoln City Libraries.
And this is a joint agreement. This is an extension of an agreement that we've had with Community Crops for Community Garden in Peter Pan Park since 2014, and it's an addition of a new site on Lincoln City Libraries site. Share this location, this is the location in Peter Pan Park. Wait for the Elmo unit to come up. This is, Peter Pan Park is located at 33rd and W Street. The existing Community Garden site is in the western portion of that site, and it's been well utilized, and we've had great experience working with Community Crops. The new location, and I'll let Tracy talk about this one, is at Gear Branch Library.
So this is Gear Branch, and we're looking north, so it'll be on the east side of the building, on the other side of the trees.
And the provisions of this, this is essentially a four-year agreement. The provisions are that Community Crops will manage the use of the garden plots, they'll pay the utilities. I should note in the agreement that there is a credit that Community Crops has for some of the initial infrastructure they put in at the Peter Pan Park site. They'll continue to use that credit towards the electricity on that site. They will install, they've installed a well and a backflow preventer at, in Peter Pan Park. They'll do the same thing at the Gear Branch Library site, and they'll provide an annual report.
Questions from the council? Seeing none. Oh, Councilwoman Washington?
Thank you. I'm just looking for alignment. So at Peter Pan Park, I understand they've got electric and they take care of the water. And I heard you mention the well at Gear, but will they need electric, and is that near-site, near this garden area?
Yes, we're going to get a quote on the electrical bill. We don't think it's going to be any more than $500 a year.
Any further questions? Okay, seeing none, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here that would like to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on.
I'll be calling item 5D, Accepting and Improving the Report of New Impending Claims Against the City for March 1st through March 15th, 2022.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak on this item?
Hello, I'm Oga Lennox. I have a accident that happened February the 10th on your Lincoln City buses, and I was here March 14th to discuss what my issue was. Today, I would like to find out if there was a resolution to what the problem was after I fell off the bus. I still have not received any kind of information, any kind of response from the Lincoln City Bus Company. And for, as me, I looked on some of their information about what the responsibilities of a bus driver is. I was one for 31 years, and I can't understand how they're different from the same union we're out of. Your responsibility as a bus driver was to see if you had the safety of your passengers. He did not check the safety if I was okay. He did not stop the bus, and I would like to see a resolution on what the protocol is for that. I've asked for that a couple of times and still have not got a resolution on that. So that's what my ending information on that particular situation. I would just like to have a response on what their situation is.
Thank you. What will happen now is, I'll ask the council if they have any questions for you, and then once the council's done asking you questions, the council can call up city staff. If any of the city staff comes up, or if there's any other comment, you'll then have an opportunity to provide a rebuttal to what anyone said. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay, thank you so much. Are there any questions from the council? Councilwoman Washington?
Good evening. Thanks for coming back. I do have a couple of questions. When you were here the last time, it sounded like, from what you said in your testimony and what our city attorney said, that you had not specified an amount that you were looking for. So you said that you were injured, you had an accident, or you fell on the bus, but you haven't submitted a specific amount of dollars. So are you looking for that, or are you looking for something else?
I'm looking for compensation, which, this is all new to me. This compensation, the way you're addressing it, is totally new to me.
Okay.
So if there was a dollar amount, then I wasn't aware of that. That's why I was expecting some kind of information or confirmation from the bus system, so I will have a chance to, you know, agree or disagree with what they're saying. My, you know, life is worth writing your system. If you understand what I'm saying.
I might. Did you incur any medical costs because of...
I didn't incur a lot of costs because I did not leave my house after I got injured. The first time, second time I was out after that injury was to go to the doctor two days later and to get my mail and come to that last hearing. So that's how long it took me before I could get out because of my back issue, because of my knee. My knee still hurts, which I don't have a problem with them saying, well, because you had pre-existing, I understand that, but this just aggravated my pre-existing injuries. And if I could have talked to someone from the company, or at least reached out to me, I could have solved this issue.
Let me see if I can repeat back what I think I understand. Are you asking for a conversation with the bus company, a conversation with the city about this?
Who's ever responsible for the drivers of Lincoln? I don't know. This is what my problem is. I don't know.
Thank you.
I'm trying to figure this out, because I personally do not know. So if they could help me with that, then I can go through the proper steps of getting what my issue is all about. Compensation, ignition for falling on your bus, for not, you know, accepting me for, as a human, as I felt, because he did not stop the bus to see if I was okay. Those kinds of things. I mean, I don't know nothing about your hearing, how you're doing all this. This is all new to me. So I'm just coming to vent my... So I'm just coming to vent my problem, if that makes sense. I'm sorry.
That makes sense.
But I, you know, thi- this is all I was told. Nobody elaborates on what you need to do, how you need, I don't know this. So I'm just coming and telling you what I know. Sorry if I'm not getting your, you know, program.
No one needs to read our minds, thank you.
Okay.
Are there any question, other questions from the council? Okay, seeing none, um, I'll ask you out of seat, and then I'll see if the council wants to call up any city staff. Once you've called up city staff, you'll then have an opportunity to provide rebuttal, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Are there, uh, any council members that would like to call up any specific city staff?
Yes.
Who would you like?
Director Elliott, I'm Director Elliott. Evening, Liz Elliott, Director of Lincoln Transportation and Utilities. I can walk through just what I did, and then if there's any questions, we can go from there. I did pull the video from this bus at that time and was able to see and hear what's going on. It was all captured on video and audio. Our bus driver was driving, he was driving appropriately, the, the speed. He was not erratically driving or anything like that. He did come to a stop. Uh, Ms. Lennox was sitting in the back on, I guess it'd be the driver's side. And then there was a passenger kind of diagonal in front of her. The bus driver was, um, there was another passenger towards the front of the bus engaging the driver in a conversation, having some questions. While they were talking, and they proceeded from a stop position to go, Ms. Lennox appeared to have been adjusting or standing up, or, or moving in some way, and fell out of her seat onto the floor. The passenger in the back did assist her up. A- and then, as the bus was driving, you could audibly hear the bus driver say something to the effect of, "Did something happen, what's going on"? The passenger who was talking to him did say she fell in the back, but she's sitting up in her seat now. They then come to the next stop, which is just shortly down the block. As Ms. Lennox exits, the bus driver asks her if she's okay. Does she need any medical assistance? Is there anything he could do? You could hear Ms. Lennox saying, um, "What's the number of the bus"? He responded, gave her the number of the bus. If I recall correctly, he, she may have asked his name. He provided his name. At all times, he was polite, was never rude or, or aggressive in any way. He answered the questions that she needed. She said no, she did not need medical assistance, and then proceeded off the bus and, and walked away. The bus driver continued on with his route at that point. I'm not aware of any messages or correspondence with Ms. Lennox to Startran. I, I believe all of the correspondence has been directed towards the, the law department at this point. They, in our review of this incident, we believe that the operator did act appropriately. As soon as he knew there was something, he looked back. She was in her seat, there were no concerns at that point. And shortly, less than a minute, they stopped at the next bus stop, and he inquired again about how she was and if she needed medical attention. At that point, she appeared to be, she was walking on her own, uh, did not appear any visible injuries or anything like that. And, uh, he ultimately took her at a word that she did not need medical attention. So, a- at this point, I don't see anything that was negligent on the, the operator's behalf. He appeared to have followed protocol. He appeared to be driving reasonably and within the, the parameters of the law, the speed and all of that. Um, it is unfortunate that she fell. It appears that it was just kind of a off-balance at the time. The bus started resuming from a stop and ultimately lost balance in the back. Um, the operator didn't see it. It was clearly the audible when he, the, one of the passengers, the front passenger, had mentioned it to him. He clearly said, "Oh, I didn't see that. Is everything okay"? And then the passenger said, "Yep, she's in her seat". So, um, I, these are tough when they, the drivers are, are driving focused on the road. They also have a passenger there talking to them, a- and they're trying to remain safe in doing that. You don't see everything that's going on in the back. It was not a busy bus, it was just those three passengers, but there's a lot going on. And Ms. Lennox was clear in the back at that point. So, understand her frustration that he didn't notice it right away. It clearly was something he just didn't see. It was not intentional, it was not meant to ignore her or be disrespectful to her. I, I believe it was, he truly just didn't see or hear it, um, in the bus that he was driving.
All right, thank you.
Any further questions for Director Elliott? Okay, seeing none, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else the council would like to speak with? Councilman Cho?
Yes. Mr. Chair, thank you. Would the city attorney help me better understand the process, please?
Johannsey Christie, City Attorney, 555 South 10th.
Oh, too soon, yeah. Thanks for coming forward. So, these are claims against the city. We normally see someone who suffered an injury or damage, and they're asking for, to be made whole or compensated for the damage. Ms. Lennox did file a claim with the city?
Yes.
And what was her claim for?
Uh, we have it down as unspecified amount, and there are a lot of ti- well, I was going to say a lot of times, it is not unusual, um, quite frankly, for someone to, um, file a claim and not specify an amount. We do see that.
That was my next question.
And then we just categorize that as, as unspecified amount.
So how does-
There's various different reasons why someone might not request an amount. Sometimes they, um, might not, um, have an amount from a hospital. Sometimes maybe they don't understand, but we don't always know. And sometimes they just are not asking for money damages. Sometimes they're asking for something else and they're filing it through the claim process. That happens as well.
You covered all my questions. What do, what do we normally do? Is it always for damages? And if it's not for damages, what do you, what's the procedure? I think you answered most of those, yeah.
Yep, and, and I mean, and just because if it comes in a, a claim, and when it comes in as a claim, whether or not it's specified damages or unspecified, I mean, we would still-
Investigate the situation.
Correct and treat it the same, and then, um, review it and make a decision about whether we believe we were negligent or not.
Uh, how did, how were your findings communicated to Ms. Lennox?
It appears that a letter would have been sent. And I might have the date, um, but we would have sent a letter, to her indicating that the claim was, um, denied. Looks like, I'm showing at least the date of our letter is March 2nd. And then in that letter, we indicate, um, that it'll be in front of the council on March 14th. And then it looks like we sent another letter on March 16th indicating that it was delayed, and that it's set again today, March 28th at 5:30 PM. That letter is dated March 16th.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other questions for Mr. Christie?
I have a question. So, I, just from my own knowledge, if there's an unspecified amount, this is kind of bouncing off of what Councilman Cho said. If there's an unspecified amount, and then we approve the claim, what exactly then gets approved, right? Like, I mean, if there's no specified amount or no, like, specified damages, if we approve the claim, then how does that get figured out?
So if it was, um, if we were recommending that there were, um, approval, we would have a specified amount, right? So, sometimes, um, if there's not an unspecified amount, or if there is a specified amount, um, and the city attorney's office is taking the position that we should pay, that amount or any other amount, we would communicate it, uh, with the claimant. Um, they would sign a release. It would be approved, it would be on the approved list, and then it would come before you. So a lot of times, I don't know that you would know whether it was unspecified or not, or whether it was the amount, um, that they were asking for or not. It, you would usually see it as, here's the amount that we're recommending that you approve.
Okay, that makes sense. Thanks. Any other questions for Mr. Christie? Okay, seeing none, thanks. Is there anyone else the council would like to call up? Okay, seeing none. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this claim?
Good question, Nick.
Yeah.
So you're going to find the, the, if it-
Well, here, I'll tell you, if you want to come on up and, uh, say your name and your address.
Yeah, Walter Russell, homeless. If I understand correctly, your verdict is going to be on a dollar amount, and, and not the situation in hand. Either there's, either there is a reason for her claim or not. If you, if, so if it comes back a million dollars, you're going to find it not. If you find that it's $10, it's good. Is that what we're doing? Because that's just what I heard, if there was a, because you're asking if it's specified, then if you just leave an open guilty verdict, then she can come back with $3 million. And you're wondering if you guys are going to be liable for that. But if you have a cap on it, that's what I'm hearing, then we might find her, you know, there's a case. If, if I'm, that's what I'm hearing. And I'm thinking if there's an incident, it's an incident. It's not monetary value.
Yeah, so I will say that the council usually does not respond to questions. Otherwise, it can turn into a pretty big back-and-forth.
Yeah, sure, sure.
But I will, I will address this, though, at least from my perspective, and that is, the question that was going through my mind is, how do we approve something without, like, what would be, if there's no specific damages that are being asked for, then why would we approve that? If there's no damages, and we take it off and we put it on the approved list, and there's no damages, then there's essentially nothing that happens with it. That's what we were, that's what I was trying to figure out.
Sure.
So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Washington?
And I think I was also trying to understand, I was trying to wonder about the, the financial damages, whether it was that, or, or was there, I mean, she can, she'd said a month ago, and she said again this week, that she didn't feel like her humanity had been recognized. And I thought, well, if that's the situation to be rectified, how is it we address someone's humanity? Because I, I feel like Ms. Lennox is saying, um, "I just needed someone to recognize that I had fallen". And I don't know if that was part of the request or the claim, um, but it was mentioned. So I, we're left in a situation where it's not something typical. We're a body that usually looks at numbers, and that's how we usually move forward.
Good point. Is there anyone else, uh, that, that, from the public that would like to provide comment on this? Okay, seeing none. Ms. Lennox, uh, if you would like to come up and provide a, a five-minute rebuttal, you have that right?
First of all, I would like to say, this is really not a fair situation to me. The City of Lincoln bus driver transit person stated some things that never happened on that bus. "I never sat down after I fell." He never said anything to me until I walked up to the front of the bus. I looked at this gentleman and I said, "Didn't you see me fall"? He expressed to me, "Oh, you fell". Right then and there, my defenses are up. I no longer want to talk to you. Because if you didn't see me laying on the floor, sliding across the floor, then you, you don't care. Yeah, I have a, a cash amount, if that's what you want. But the thing of it was, I don't know your process. How many times I got to say that until I get what you're saying and you get what I say? So as, as far as her saying he was conversing with somebody, maybe he was. I don't think so. When the philosophy of a bus, I don't know if anybody rides their bus system. I'm new to this system here. So, and I'm old and fragile now, I'm not as viral as I used to be. And when he turns that corner, I have no stamina like I used to, to not fall or lean forward. Yes, I was sitting when I fell. I was not standing up when I fell. I was sitting in the seat, getting ready to put my arm through a backpack, is what I was doing. And as far as him saying, did he ask me, "Are you okay"? He never did that. And as far as him saying, um, she said something else, that he, he gave me his name. No, he never gave me his name. He said the bus number, and he said the route number. That's all you need. I said, "Thank you" after that. When he said, "Did you mean medical?", I said, "No". Why am I going to stand there another hour? I'm already shaken. I'm sick at this point. I can't stand because I've been out longer than I should have been. So when he asked that, I said, "No". So all I did was I came in, my house, I called the number that's in the book. No answer. I called back the next day. Lady took the statement and everything, she told me to call city attorneys. I did what she said. She just said, "Well, write out, send in a letter". That's exactly what I did. As far as anybody sending me any communication, I'd never seen the video. I requested a video. I called a couple of times for that. Nobody responds to me. So that's what I'm saying, you're telling me to do a dollar amount? Yeah, just like the guy said. I could ask for a million dollars. I know I'm not going to get it, but yes, I can ask for something. I deserve something. But what my problem was, I don't get no response from nobody. And if that was a denial letter, I came here and I talked about it. Nobody sent me a copy of the bus incident. I should have been able to see that, see what she saw, because she hadn't seen none of what I saw. Nothing. I did not sit down after I got back up off the floor. I struggled to get up off the floor. Yes, the gentleman that was in front of me, like she said, he asked if he could help. I couldn't talk, so all I could do was just get up, and I stood up against the bar. Until he missed my stop, I finally rang the bell for the next stop. So yes, when I stood up and got off the bus, I never sat down like she said.
One minute.
And I never, um, communicated any other thing. He never said his name or anything like that. So all those things that, that right there was not true. So yes, if I need a dollar amount, yes, I would ask for $100,000. I know I'm not going to get it, but my life is better than what they're trying to say. I got hurt that day. No, I didn't ask to fall off the seat. I just fell off the seat. And it, that's just how it happened. So I didn't lie about anything. I told some of the truth, but not all. So that's all I'm saying about that.
Is there any questions from the council for Ms. Lennox? Okay, seeing none, thank you so much. When we get to the voting session, um, if someone makes a, a motion to, uh, remove your claim from the denied list, then we'll take a vote on it. And then if the council votes to remove your claim from the denied list, that means that your claim hasn't been approved.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
That makes sense.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here that would like to speak on, um, item 5D? Any pending claims? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on.
We cannot vote on these items. Item 5A is approving the consultant agreement with GRM Information Management Services for professional assistance in automated permitting and licensing application introduced by Pecius.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilman McGinnis. Any discussion? Seeing none, may we please call the roll?
Pecius?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Choob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. Item 5B is approving a conserva- conservation easement agreement between the City and MNC Ventures LLC to preserve the floor storage capacity on property generally located at First and A Street, introduced by Pecius.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilman McGinnis. Any discussion? Seeing none, may we please call the roll?
Pecius?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Choob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. Item 5C is approving the agreement between the City of Lincoln and Community Crops to operate the, an urban garden at the west end of Peter Pan Park, generally located between 30th and 32nd Street and Apple and W Streets, and at Gere Library on the east side of the property connecting to Norman Boulevard, introduced by Pecius.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilwoman Raybold. Any discussion?
This is a good thing.
Any further comments? Okay, seeing none, may we please call the roll?
Pecius?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Choob?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. Item 5D is accepting and approving the report of new impending claims against the city from March 1st through March 15th, 2022, introduced by Pecius.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilwoman Raybold. Any discussion? See, Councilwoman Raybold?
Yes, I'm, I'm hoping that, um, I'd like to request that we pull Ms. Lennox from the denied list and that we each have an opportunity to- and that we each have an opportunity to view the video of the incident. Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilwoman Washington. Did you wanna talk more?
Elaborate on?
I guess we're, we're hearing two, two sides of, of what happened. And so, I, I think it would be a, a good idea to have an opportunity to view the same video.
Any discussion? I just have a clarification. Do you mean that we delay voting on it or we remove it from denied and move it to approved?
No, I think, I think the process is that we have to remove it from the list and it'll get brought up on the next one, assuming we all have had a chance to look at the video.
Remove from the denied list for further research or some version of that?
Some version of that, yes.
Any further discussion?
Investigation would have been the better word.
Thank you, Councilwoman Raybold. I think it's a good solution on this one, hearing two different stories that are different from each other. We don't get this very often. And I would like to take a look at this, so thank you for suggesting.
Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, may we please call the roll on Councilwoman Raybold's amendment?
Ward?
No.
Raybold?
Yes.
Pecius?
No.
Washington?
Yes.
Shob?
No.
McGinnis?
No.
Bowers?
No.
Motion lost 2 to 5.
Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, may we please call the roll on the main motion?
Ward?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Pecius?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. That concludes our public hearing resolutions. We can move on to Section 6, Public Hearing Ordinances, Second Reading and Related Resolutions. I'll be calling items 6A and 6B together. Comprehensive Plan Amendment 22003, Application of the Planning Director to amend the Lincoln Lancaster County 2050 Comprehensive Plan to revise the future land use map from commercial and urban density residential to public and semi-public on property legally generally located at Waterford Estates Drive and Lindwood Lane. And the related change of zone 22001, Application of Southeast Community College to change from AG Agriculture District, B2 Plan Neighborhood Business District, and R3 Residential District to public, P, Public Use District and O3 Office District to P Public Use District on property generally located at Waterford Estates Drive and Lindwood Lane.
Steve Hendrickson with the Planning Department, 555 South 10th Street. Just coming up, if there's any questions on this item. It is part of three applications that were filed by Southeast Community College. This is the Count Plan Amendment and the Change of Zone, basically to reflect the fact that the property that Southeast Community College bought of about 35 acres to the east of their current campus would be used by Southeast Community College in the future. So, that's the Change of Zone. It just changes their property to P Public. They're a public entity. In our comprehensive plan, we would now show that as public property. The third component of their application was a preliminary plat that included some streets to be built. And there was some concern, both from the neighbors to the north and to the neighbor, the Shriners to the south, about that preliminary plat. And so, it has been held at Planning Commission and is on their agenda for continued public hearing on March 30th, Wednesday of this week. So, the, the item that drew most of the concern was the preliminary plat, and that has not yet been acted upon by the Planning Commission. There wasn't really particular opposition to the Change of Zone or the Count Plan Amendment, and those require your actions, so that's why they're before you here today.
Any further questions? Nope. Much. Anyone else I would like to speak on this item? Anyone else I would like to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on.
That concludes our public hearing ordinances, second reading and related resolutions. We can move on to Section 7, Ordnances, Third Reading and Related Resolutions. Item 7A is Annexation 22001, Application of Rockabye Holdings.
Yes, we do.
LTD and Southview Inc. to annex approximately 42.35 acres, more or less on property generally located at South 70th Street and Rockabye Road, introduced by Washington.
So, moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilman Pecius. Any discussion?
Yeah.
Seeing none, will, can we please call the roll?
Rebold?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Pecius?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 7B is Change of Zone 22003, Applications of Rockabye Holdings LTD and Southview Inc. to change from AG Agriculture District to R3 Residential District on property legally generally located at South 70th Street and Rockabye Road, introduced by Washington.
So, moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilman Pecius. Any discussion? Seeing none, may we please call the roll?
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Pecius?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 7C is Change of Zone 21022A, Applications of Rockabye Holdings LTD and Southview Inc. to change from AG Agriculture District to R5 Residential District, PUD, to expand the existing Grandview Estates, second addition, PUD, by approximately 9.8 acres for a total of approximately 911 multiple, multiple family dwelling units and 50,000 square feet of commercial floor area on property generally located at South 70th Street and Rockabye Road, introduced by Washington.
So, moved.
Okay.
Moved and seconded by Councilman Pecius. Any discussion? Seeing none, may we please call the roll?
Ward?
Yes.
Pecius?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 7D is Change of Zone 21054, Application of Tom Schlick, to change from AG Agriculture District to B2 Planet Neighborhood Business District on property generally located at North 98th Streets and Boathouse Road, introduced by Washington.
So, moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilman Pecius. Any discussion? Seeing none, oh, Councilwoman Washington, sorry.
Yeah. You know, this is, we've got a lot of letters on this and it goes along with a lot of the letters we got on a similar project of east of this location. And I know we're gonna get a lot of letters on the, the item that we heard today. In part, it's more on the plat that we're gonna get a lot of letters and concerns. And I just wanted to at least acknowledge that we've had a lot of concern about this. But as I looked at this project and I, I went back and I, I read the history of this project and I was trying to understand, understand the, the neighbors' concern with traffic, with density. And I really see this as a, an expectation that something would be different, that when they purchased their homes at Waterford, that it would all be single-family. And I know that it is rare for folks to read into all of the land use planning around the area. But this seems to be primarily an issue between the original developer, the people who bought early and had expectations of single-family homes, and property rights of the people who own the land and their ability to develop those, those lands within zoning rules. And I don't see where they have violated any zoning rules. I don't feel like the project is, it, it doesn't violate B2 zoning. It's in, in line with that. And any of the covenants that people think that there might be on property that they've purchased, that is really a relationship issue between yourself and the person who you signed the covenants with, not the City of Lincoln. But I just, I did want to acknowledge that because I know that people have been writing that. The transportation issues, I, I feel there's going to come a time very soon where we're gonna need to look at transportation in that area. I think all of the additional, even though people are only looking at transportation studies for specific projects, there is a building, a, 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 you know, an aggregation of traffic studies that I think is gonna require us to take a broader look at transportation in the area because there just will be, there's gonna be a lot more traffic. And we haven't asked any developer to do that aggregated study. And I think that we're gonna need to, at some point, take a look at how we look at multiple projects coming into an area. And they're, they have the right to do this, but we need to also be prepared with transportation studies. Thank you for allowing me that time to speak what's on my mind.
Councilman Shob?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Councilwoman Washington. Mr. Chair, would it be possible for Mr. Hendrickson to come up and help me understand the difference between, or the relationship between 7D and 7E? I think they're kinda related, but kinda different.
Steve Hendrickson with the Planning Department. So, 7D is the Change of Zone, to change the remaining land to B2, of which we had recommended approval as well as the Planning Commission. The use permit then is 7E. And 7E has some very specific conditions. And the developer last time at the meeting offered a motion to amend on the use permit. And things were moving along rapidly last time, and so, we didn't get a chance to, if there's any questions, to see on the 7E item. But 7E is really implementing what the Change of Zone is with, with 7D.
If I may, and that's kind of my question because I thought we had a discussion about motions to amend and options, and I wasn't seeing that here. So, should I wait till 7E to ask that question?
That would be on 7E specifically then, yeah, where there was a handout made by the applicant that had a motion to amend, but that is specific to, to 7E.
Thank you, that helps me. Don't go too far away, I have some questions. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, may we please call the roll?
Pecius?
Yes.
McGinnis?
He stepped out, he's excused himself for the smoke.
Oh, excuse me, sorry. Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. Item 7E is Use Permit 21010, Application of Waterford Estates LLC to allow up to 505 multifamily dwelling units and 48,000 square feet of commercial floor area on approximately 24.24 acres with associated waivers and property generally located at North 98th Street and Boathouse Road, introduced by Washington.
So, moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilman Pecius. Any discussion? Councilman Shob?
Yes. Mr. Hendrickson, would you come up and explain to me the conditions? And then there were some motions to amend that we...
That the applicant has...
Oh, maybe you have some questions, the applicant, too?
Sure. Steve Hendrickson, Planning Department. Also with me to introduce to you all is David McClintock, who's with Lincoln Transportation Utilities and their Traffic Engineering section. So, yes, I, I do think it would be appropriate, we will try to answer questions and explain the two issues really that were part of the motion to amend. And then, yes, since we didn't really have the staff questions and the typical rebuttal last time, I, I do think it would be appropriate for you to bring up the applicant and to help, you know, see what their comment would be on our R2 issues. So, really, the, the motion to amend was two items. One was the right-hand turn lane that is from people going south on 98th Street and turning right on to Waterford Estates Drive. And then, the second item had to do with the street on the south side and how much of it would be built. So, I'll, I'll ask actually David to address the first item, which is the need for the right-hand turn lane. It would be in 98th Street onto Waterford Estates Drive, where the staff recommendation and conditions would be that the developer build that right turn lane. And, but the development team is asking instead they not be required to build that right-hand turn lane, meaning it would have to be built by the city.
All right, well, thank you. So, I provided a lot of the technical comments for this traffic development study from the, the city's perspective to, to review what they were responding to. And so, one of the things that I noted and flagged is, was in the existing conditions, and I believe this was previously mentioned by the developer, in the current traffic counts, which were conducted earlier this year, about January. So, we have very recent data for what's happening out there right now. And they counted multiple intersections around this area, so not just this one. And they currently only show about two vehicles in the PM or the, the later peak of that. So, as, as a global step back, it shows that currently, right now, we don't have a heavy southbound right turn movement associated in, at that intersection and that drivers, you know, from the north are probably coming, you know, south on 98th. There's a access drive into the neighborhood area further north. It appears from the county data that they were, are preferring that. And then, traffic from the, from the south is turning left, but, you know, different, different movement. So, then, as part of the traffic study process, they do a land development. You've, you've heard the numbers in terms of what the specific land uses are with the multifamily housing, the commercial. And so, then, the study projects and, and organizes that into the, summarizes that in the report. So, we have a new traffic pattern forming. That is largely what my comment on the study was, is we now have a, a new, new, new change. And so, now would be the time to implement or request this removal from a position of the city. So, I agree very much with your comments of there is a lot of growth going on in this area. And we, we have some potential to expand on that. And, you know, that's not so much this discussion as relates to now. But in terms of this specific development, this is the, the time, the point where, you know, the remaining last build-out on the east-west side of the roadway is going to occur. So, if, if the city relinquishes the request now, it, it will be fully a city cost. And we, we run the risk of being behind the curve because it builds out and we, we haven't made that request because this is essentially the, the last time to, to make that. So, there is a change of pattern. That was largely what the comment was. And initially, my, my, my formal comment on the study regarding the topic was, the concern with analysis was that the, the consultant determined that, well, because there is not currently a southbound right turn lane, they shouldn't include that as part of the analysis. And it's kind of an interesting blend because they recommend that a southbound right turn lane should be required, and that would be part of the access management policy. And there's some details and nuance there. But really, there's not an argument being made from an engineering perspective as to why a southbound right turn shouldn't be constructed. So, that would be the appropriate case for them to make is developers say, we, we are requesting this deviation request for, away from access management policy, but here's our engineering case to, to back that up. So, that's now provided this time. We flagged a change in pattern. And then, if you go back to the, the previous earlier annexation agreements, there are discussions about full build-outs of left turn lanes, right turn lanes, traffic signalization. And, you know, I'll keep that brief for the sake of this discussion. But open to any other questions that there might be.
Are there any other questions from the council?
Yes. Thank you, David, appreciate it. My understanding was that the applicant was asking to delay implementation of the right-hand turn lane, not waive it completely? Is that correct?
Well, maybe I can address that. So, what I have on the viewer today is, I'll go two quick exhibits, I think, that'll help try to explain that. So, basically, in green, what we have here is 98th Street today, O Street that is on the south. This kind of red outline is the Erosseus at Waterford. The property that is hatched, that's the previous Southeast Community College purchase. And Southeast Community College ultimately would be extending Waterford Estates Drive so that they have another access and entrance point to their campus. So, what, what they're proposing is that the right-hand turn lane be postponed because if they develop the apartment complex from south to north, they thought then that in their first phase, if they're just on the south side, they wouldn't need the right-hand turn lane. if they're just on the south side, they wouldn't need the right-hand turn lane. And that would be true, other than this use permit does not have any phasing plan. So there's nothing for the city, if they came in for a building permit that says, oh, hold it, you can only get building permits or only plat the lots on the south side, because this plan, there isn't a phasing plan. There isn't anything that says only the lot, the units on the south side can be built and the ones on the north side. So, because what they're, now they're kind of zooming in to the site in close, this is kind of showing their detail of the apartments, which shows the road on the south side. And then yellow was their initial layout of the apartment units. And what I think they were trying to argue in their motion to amend is that once there is a driveway, that motion to amend says a private roadway, but I think the intent was this driveway. Once this driveway was built, then they felt like, well, there would be then people turning into here and the right-hand turn lane would be necessary. But we also have another private roadway that needs to be built between the apartments and the commercial. And so what the motion to amend doesn't address is, well, if the commercial was being developed, certainly some people might be coming southbound on 98th Street and turn, and they would have to make a U-turn on Waterford Estates Drive, because they were trying to get some type of, of the commercial development on the north end. Again, there isn't a part of their use permit, anything that says the commercial has to wait till something else happens. So we think, since there is not a phasing plan with the use permit, trying to have the condition removed for the right-hand turn lane, I wouldn't work phasing-wise. If I could also address one thing that was in the motion as well. The motion to amend says also that if the council decides that the turn lane should be done, and let's say whether it's phased or not, that the impact fees paid by this apartment complex or commercial development would be used to reimburse them. And we certainly support the idea that if the developer does the turn lane, as we recommend, that they, that is an eligible improvement to be reimbursed from impact fees. So we agree that it is eligible. The challenge is, is that all of this land is already subject to the Waterford Estates Annexation Agreement. And that annexation agreement, that was approved by the city council years ago, says that all of the impact fees in this land, as well as all of Waterford Estates, is going to be used first to reimburse the developer, Waterford Estates LLC, for an improvement that's being made at 104th and Holdridge, which is a new roundabout that'll lead to the, to their development, as well as elementary school. So today, this would be in second place. After that, other improvement is fully paid off, then impact fees could be used to pay off the next improvement. But that agreement doesn't say what that is. So we definitely think that if the council decides, yep, they should go ahead and make the improvement, that that agreement will need to be amended to say, okay, now in second, this would be done. Or if that original developer says, you know what, I'm okay with you taking these impact fees and reimbursing for that turn lane, the agreement could be amended to say that as well. But that's, so we think it's difficult for you to pass a motion that says you're going to get directed impact fees to repay you right away, because we have this other agreement that is actually already in place that says, no, the city has agreed to collect impact fees here and use them to repay 105th and Holdridge. So, now, I did briefly last week talk to Danae Kalkowski, who represents, actually the developer who is selling them, this land, as well as the developer who's getting repaid for 105th. And so if they come forward and say, you know what, we're okay with them using their impact fees to be reimbursed for that turn lane, the city would not have any opposition to that being done, because it is a reimbursable improvement. I'm sorry if that gets a little complicated, but it is a little complicated in terms of that amendment.
If I may, I'll quickly add some input on the phasing. So as was previously referenced last week, this is a Category 1 traffic impact study, which is the smallest level of analysis that we conduct. So it has to cover the analysis at the end, full build-out of the site, opening year, which in the report they document is 2025 for an analysis purpose. So I'll, the clarification I want to make is, it's very typical to not phase these types of developments and get into, oh, well, we're going to do this much commercial, this much residential, or in this order, because typically developers like to see that flexibility to build it out. And as dynamic as land development is, they may not be able to blind up buyers or land uses in the order they would want, and they're subject to outside forces with that timing. So in terms of then putting it on the city to say, well, hey, let's, let's put this other criteria in terms of, well, we need to wait till this land use, there's many challenges, and that's why typically we would take the position, well, if the study as a whole recommends a certain improvement, which we've flagged this particular one, we should ask for it now, because it becomes much trickier down the road. And, you know, it could be very well be that the reason it doesn't have a southbound right turn lane now is, back then, that case was made, here we are today talking about again. Whereas if there'd been a stronger push then of, hey, there's going to be this build-out, let's fully comply with access management policy, or the trendings towards that, this wouldn't be something that we would need to continue to talk about now. And so that's heavily where, where the argument to do this now is coming from.
Councilman, Councilwoman Ro.
So basically, if we are supporting the city's recommendation that these infrastructure improvements need to go in as part of the development, no matter what it's phased, we should vote no against the waivers that they are requesting?
Against the motion to amend, yes.
Motion to amend.
They had some waivers that are, that are not being contested. It's the motion to amend that was handed out last time, it has two parts. One dealt with the right turn lane, and then the other one dealt with the road on the south. And I could address the road on the, the south. But yes, we're, we'd say, no, don't approve the motion to amend. There is an alternate that was also on the backside of the motion to amend, in case you did want to have the turn lane. And that's the one that calls for directed impact fee reimbursement. That one might be appropriate, but what we're saying is, we'll hold it first. If you think reimbursement is appropriate, maybe you put it on pending for a week or so that we can verify with the other developer. They're going to be okay having their agreement amended to let this one get reimbursed versus these fees going to reimburse them.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Cho, and I'll do Councilwoman Beckius after that.
Thank you, thank you. Gentlemen, I'm a little confused about something, and this may be getting into the weeds too far. That right turn lane, right now there's a two-lane street through there that's kind of iffy. The land for the right turn lane, has that already been secured? Is that, was that an easement that's already there, or would that have to be purchased?
It is all currently city, city property. We have the right-of-way to fully continue the two-lane with meetings and turn lanes north to Holdridge. And I imagine that, so, the initial, the initial plans for the south section were sealed 2006, or, excuse me, 2008, which would be pre-access management policy. So those plans would not have, would not have had to comply with what we now think of that. But then the north half was sealed in 2014. So it kind of, that's, I understand one of the challenges, or maybe the frustrations with this is, we have two different standards. And so I'm sure there were conversations at that time of, there is no connecting, we're bounded by Holdridge and O Street. We haven't fully expanded such, we don't have a heavy north-southbound movement. Let's, let's go with less than at that time. And so then, functionally, half of the full-size design is what's constructed today. And so if you look at the, there is a real small pocket that almost looks like a mini southbound right turn lane, but it's certainly not to any of roadway design standards in terms of storage length, or deceleration, or tapers. And so that's, you know, would need to be reconstructed now. So in terms of ease, it should be much easier than a conventional, in terms, there's not a right-of-way. There is still, of course, cost with that, but...
But land acquisition and easement, all those things have already been secured in the past. And so based on the image there, and I'm not as, my size, not as used to be, where the letter N is in North 98th, is where the, where the right turn lane should be in? All that brown is...
Mark, start somewhere up in here and come in.
And it's sidewalk to the west of that.
Correct, yes. Now, as David mentioned, there will be some cost. If there are storm sewer inlets that need to be moved today, those would have to be moved over for the right turn lane, so it's not, potentially not just as simple as putting in some pavement and you're done. There'll definitely be some cost involved.
Councilman Cho, or Councilwoman Beckius?
Thank you, Chair Bowers, appreciate it. Gentlemen, reading through the reports, it looks like that the Planning Commission did not necessarily have the opportunity to weigh in on the applicant's motions to amend. I think that they were maybe delivered day of, what have you. And so no context from Planning Commission in terms of those motions to amend. But subsequently, you guys have had time, I'm assuming, to meet with the applicant and discuss things with the applicant since that point in time. Is that correct?
Two parts to that. Yes, you are correct. The motion to amend was handed out at the Planning Commission meeting. It hadn't been reviewed by staff in advance. We said we would need a two-week delay, because they meet every two weeks. And the applicant, when asked, said, well, we'd rather you just move this on to the planning, City Council. But no, we were not contacted by the applicant to discuss the motion to amend. And so there hadn't been any discussions between the Planning Commission and now as to the motion to amend. We have reviewed what they passed out, and that's where we're identifying a couple of issues regarding the two changes.
Okay, thank you.
And from a traffic study perspective, we usually, I receive it down the line and provide comments. I know that those comments have come back, and I'm familiar with the traffic engineer who completed this, this study, and we've had a phone call. And so I think there is concurrence and understanding of the comments, but then there's certainly the negotiation level of, well, who pays for it? And should we do this now? So there is a, we did have several comments, and so there are certainly, well, you know, even just go, you know, part of the generality, so as part of the study that I reviewed, they only included 450 dwelling units of that multifamily use. The number of units directly impacts the estimated number of trips applied. And it's not going to break this development, but again, I want to convey that I'm working off of the best information that I receive, and so there is some, you know, some translation with that. And so I don't think it changes our recommendation in terms of what we would ask as a city, but it speaks to that generality, and so then, you know, well, let's, let's ask now for, for that southbound right turn lane.
And the reason I ask is because, as we all know, construction costs of streets is not going down, not going down. So I am sensitive to the ideology of what can we do now versus maybe what can we do later, but still have an agreement to do later? If it can help the developer, you know, if they're doing a phased approach, you know, if, when we get to the end product, we're where we wanted to be from the start, but we're simply phasing through that project, you know, I'm very, in today's environment, very open to that concept. And so that's why I was asking to see if you had had contact with the applicant about what, because as you stated, Mr. Hendrickson, that the, there was no phasing plan, if you will, to implement the right turn lane eventually down the road.
Correct. And so, yes, if we had a phasing plan, yes, definitely if the south side was built first, and we agreed on what the boundaries of the south side was, and they're not making any connection to Waterford Estates Drive, and there's no commercial, then, yes, you wouldn't need the turn lane to start with. But that'd be part of the phasing. If I can also address the second part of the motion to amend, because it also kind of gets into phasing. So kind of backing up to the bigger picture, there's really two reasons why we recommend this street in orange be built when the adjacent, part of their first phase, when the adjacent apartment building next to that road is built. So there's, there's two reasons. The first is, they said in their comments, well, this road really only serves Southeast Community College, and Southeast Community College is really only interested in the north street first, and not the south one. And that is correct. But this street also serves the Shriners' property, which they bought for their own use and have now have it up for sale. So we've had, talked to people who are interested in buying this property for commercial development. And so this street actually would provide some access to them, because part of what got hung up at Planning Commission is the Shriners started to be concerned that there's an access point shown to O Street in the future, and that that access, this is from the plumery plat that is not before you, that plumery plat showed the access going through them versus being on the land that is owned by Southeast Community College, but unfortunately, that land goes through a floodway. And I don't want to get too lost in the why is this? But just generally, this access is needed for if the Shriners' property does not take access to O Street, or even just wants to have two access points, you're going to need this street to get to the Shriners' property, as well as Southeast. But the bigger, really, issue for the city goes to how this property is going to be handled in terms of addressing emergency services, deliveries, and everything else. So in the plan, if they come forward in the first phase is these two buildings, this is an exhibit where Building and Safety and Lincoln Fire and Rescue were trying to figure out, how would they address these buildings so that you can get to the correct building with a big apartment complex, particularly of buildings that are quite large, where one building might block the view of another building entirely? And so both Lincoln Fire Rescue and Building and Safety, these little green arrows were trying to show where they'd be addressing, this building would be addressed off of this street. But the developer's proposal was only to build the street to here and to not build any of this street. So the street with which they would be addressed off of, let's call it Boathouse Road, it wouldn't be built, but yet the building would be right next to it. So Lincoln Fire and Rescue said, in our internal review, looking at the dressing, said, no, we need to have this street, because we also want to make sure we have as much access to this building as we can. I will note, the fire station building's right there. So the response time's going to be really good. It's going to be excellent. But they still want to see that for addressing purposes, the adjacent street be built, because if they're dealing with an emergency on this end, they want to make sure they have the access through it. And necessarily going through a parking lot isn't necessarily often the best way. So, and then if you, on the second phase, started building these buildings, well, they would definitely want to see this going forward. And so actually, their concern is, they would really have rather seen an entire street built on the west side. But initially, we thought we had agreement between Southeast Community College that this street would actually be built on their property, and so this could just be parking on the west side. So the big picture here really is, is that, no, I don't think Lincoln Fire and Rescue and Building and Safety would recommend at all not having this street built, even with just the first phase. If that first phase is going to include this building, they would want to see it there, because they want to have the Lincoln Fire and Rescue, the access to it, as well as just simply all the deliveries, and how do you explain how people to get there? So we don't support the motion to amend that would say, you put in the right-of-way, but you only build this part of the street. We think if there's going to be development over here, as required by the subdivision ordinance, you should build the adjacent street now.
Councilwoman Washington?
Thank you. This is a really complicated, and I know it shouldn't probably be as complicated. And partly, it's because this project is, or this, the bigger project has been going on for quite some time. And so you had agreements on the big project with one developer, and now we have a second developer who has purchased this, or is in the process of purchasing this, and they still need to negotiate impact fees with the other developer. I agree that the payment or the reimbursement using impact fees for the roadway is allowable and makes sense. But I get a little confused about the fact that they have to negotiate with the person they're purchasing the land from to allow them to get in line ahead of, or at the same time as the reimbursements of the circle at Holdridge and 105th. So would you explain to me how much time you think is necessary to do that negotiation? Because I agree they should get impact fees for it, but they shouldn't be first in line unless the person who made the agreement initially with the city grants them that. So if I understand that correct, tell me how much time are you suggesting, again, that we hold back from a decision on impact fees?
So, yes, our concern is making sure we, we do have to have that, because of the agreement, we do have to have the original developer agree to amend it, basically, because this land today has to go off to 105th. So one, we would, it'd be pretty quick, probably, to hear from the developer. Yep, we're good with that. Let's say that is the case. But I do think that the second question that developer might say as well, how is this going to be worded in the agreement? And so that might take a week or two to make sure we're all on the same page as to how we're going to word this, if they are agreeing to amend it, because that amendment is not in front of you. And it would take us, you know, at a bare minimum, three to four weeks for that to be drafted, and the appropriate timeframe be done to legally advertise that there's now going to be something on your agenda. So if, if the developer said, yes, I'm fine with doing it, but I want that agreement in front of the city council at the same time, well, then that would be probably more like four weeks. But if your motion to amend, you, the developer was fine with you going ahead and we'll get that agreement done later, then that potentially could be done in two weeks. And people in the city attorney's office, if they're mad at me for saying that, because they're the ones that probably have to do the work, they can disagree fully with me if they wish.
Where did you go to law school?
Yeah, I'm just committing their time, you're correct.
Any further questions for city staff? Okay, seeing none, thanks so much. I'd like to invite Ms. Post and Mr. Marshall up to provide a rebuttal.
All right.
Good evening. My name is Ann Post. I'm an attorney with Remble Lucky Law Firm, 1128, 1128 Lincoln Mall, Suite 300. I am representing the developer. And so, I'm going to start with kind of an overview of kind of where we are in the process today, and also answer a few things that came up with impact fees. Then I'm also going to kick things over, let Mr. Marshall talk a little bit more about just the details on traffic count and road construction, et cetera. So, first, why we're here today, when there could be more discussions to be had about reimbursement from directed impact fees. So, the motion to amend, that was in front of you, as Mr. Hendrickson said, there were two motions to amend. There was the motion, preferred motion to amend and an alternate. Preferred motion to amend said, this developer does not have to build this turn lane, because this developer is not creating the trip counts that necessitate that turn lane, so it shouldn't be a cost of this development. To the extent that it is necessary that it's built, it should be a city cost, and there are going to be impact fees generated by this project to build that. So, that was the first motion to amend. The preferred motion to amend says, it is not the developers, or takes that condition to approval of the use permit out. It says, this developer does not have to build the turn lane. So, then there was the alternate motion to amend, and that was because ultimately, this developer has invested a lot of time and money into this project, and wanted to have an alternate in place. And that was, should you say no, that this developer does need to build this turn lane, we're asking that you say, but, you don't need to build it until there is that driveway on the west, that runs north-south on the west side of the project, until that connection is made to Waterford Estates Drive. Why? Because that, sorry.
Show?
Oh, yes.
Show us that driveway that you're referencing, Ann.
Yes.
You give it to me?
I did. All right. So, that's this, that's this connection?
Thank you.
And so, that's because that is a full-access connection, because this connection to Waterford Estates Drive is going to be right-in, right-out only. And so, I will let Brad elaborate on that a little bit more, but that, this connection won't be driving that southbound traffic into the development, also because the idea that this road would be, would be generating more traffic here. Well, Brad, I'm gonna, I was going to explain that, it was a little confusing. I'm going to leave that to him before I confuse anybody. So, the alternate said, should you say no, this developer does need to build the turn lane. We're asking to wait that we build that turn lane at the time this connection is made, because that's when, as Mr. Marshall will explain, we'll be actually driving traffic southbound into this development. So, then that comes back to the directed impact fees. Okay? And so, the idea is that, yes, we are aware that impact fees in the area are being directed to other projects, to reimburse other improvements in the area. We have talked to the developer to have the preliminary conversation, let them know that this was going to happen, and ask their, take their temperature. Temperature was, they would be in favor of it, or be willing to work with us on that. The one thing that we need direction from the council on is the timing of that, because right now, the improvements that have been built, and that are being, are directed for reimbursement to other improvements in the area, those were calculated, that the other residential improvement that's occurring in the area is enough to pay that back. They don't need these impact fees to pay that back. However, there's a timing issue. If we wait until, you know, the six to eight years till we have this, this connection to build our turn lane, that won't be an issue anymore. They will have been first in line, they will have been paid back. At that point, our own, this developer's own impact fees can reimburse that. So, that's where we need the direction on timing. First, do we have to build the turn lane, and second, the direction on timing? Do we have the council's support in waiting until this connection is made, so that we can negotiate that agreement? And so, that is why, while it would be very helpful to have that agreement in hand to come in front of you, we needed that direction to be able to go back and negotiate that agreement. Okay, so with that, I will answer any questions to that. Otherwise, I will allow Mr. Marshall to give you a few more details, and I'll be available.
Councilman Beckus?
Yeah. And maybe this is what Mr. Marshall is going to talk about. So, if I am coming, if I'm proceeding south on 98th, coming from the north, and I am turning right onto Waterford, whatever it's called?
Waterford Estates Drive.
Waterford Estates Drive. I cannot, after making that turn to the west, I cannot immediately turn left into the apartment complex, because there is a divided median there. And so, an apartment dweller will not be able to access the site at all until, from the north, until the access point that Ms. Post has highlighted there is actually built. And that's the rationale that's being used to say, because of the divided median, anyone coming from the north is not going to be able to access the site anyway, any apartment dweller. Is that, am I understanding it correctly?
That is correct.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Rabel?
Ms. Post, well, I would like to delay that development of that intersection, but can you tell me what financing method they would like to provide, like a bond, an escrow?
Are you talking about, for the turn lane, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
For that turn lane?
Yeah, to be developed at a later point in time, when the rest of the development has occurred.
And so, I think, generally, it's a general practice to escrow for that. I would say, first, our preferred answer would be that we, that this development hasn't created the need for this turn lane and doesn't have to build it. Should you say yes, you have to build it, then typically, there would be an escrow in place for that.
Counselor Washington?
When I was driving, actually, from the north to the south on 98th, and I turned onto Waterford Estates, I think I did what Steve Hendrickson suggested, that there was an opportunity to do a U-turn. And so, you could still get to the apartments, but you would come along Waterford Estates, make a U-turn, and come back to get the right turn entry. Yes?
I would say, that's doable, just as an intersection, anybody can do, not advisable. As you know, that roadway is dead-ended right now, and one day...
Made two, right, we made two U-turns on Saturday. Go ahead.
I won't tell anybody. And I think that's probably one of the things that I, that I guess this body gets to consider, is who is responsible for this? Is, you know, Waterford Estates, we talk about these traffic patterns. Waterford Estates basically created the traffic pattern here, with 98 Streets and the studies that Olson helped develop with Waterford Estates back in 2006. I think we're just saying, is, the traffic's going to increase, we know that. The numbers are there. Ben's pointed out the increase in AM and PM peaks here. From the engineering, we have to say, access management is saying there has to be a turn, there should be a turn lane here. There isn't a turn lane, and there should be. From an engineering perspective, there's no trigger. Like, we talked about signalization, there's triggers, and we meet warrants to have a signal. Not so much with a turn lane. We don't, we don't say it's warranted at two trips, or, who actually do. We say at two trips, it's warranted, because there's an access point there on 98th Street. In 2014, the city did the design, access management policy existed. And it's very, very clear to me that they made decisions not to add those turn lanes to, from Waterford Estates Drive to Holdridge. Five intersections, there's not one right turn lane included in any of those intersections. There's infrastructure that's in the way that would prohibit a turn lane just to be added where we are today. That is, when we talk about the cost implications, okay, this isn't about just having the developer do the turn lane, and the developer pay for the turn lane. Developer carries the loan, and the city pays for the turn lane. So, at the end of the day, the city pays for this turn lane through the impact fees. That's going to be generated through the development of Waterford Estates. That's really the question, is, is the council going to require the turn lane to be installed, have Aristo carry the loan to put in the, put in the turn lane, and then be paid back through the impact fees? The other thing that, two more points on the traffic study, is we show the worst-case scenario. We have to, basically, from an engineering perspective. They have retained the right in those B2 areas with office and retail, and gas stations that have higher traffic volume generations. Aristo's said, but maintained some flexibility within the application, that if the apartments are going well, those are going to be residential uses. They'll flip those, or I shouldn't say flip, but they have the option to do dwelling units where those commercial uses are. So, they'll be replacing, could be replacing those with residential uses. So, the traffic study really is a worst-case scenario for this development. The other part is, as Steve Hendrickson was up here about the change zone with Southeast Community College, and I heard him say, and Olson works for Southeast Community College also, their priority is to extend Waterford Estates Drive. That probably would have happened this year, with the use permit being delayed a little bit. Probably will happen next year. So, we haven't even taken into consideration what the, what Southeast Community College will generate for turns on the southbound 98th Street. And we can pretty definitively stand here and say, those trips are going to happen before ground is even broken for this apartment project. So, again, the question is, who's, who should be ultimately responsible for this? That's really why we're questioning the turn lane. Not that it's not warranted, we're just saying, if the city believes that it is, it is required today because of the trips, or the trips that are projected to be within the development, that the city should take it, take on that responsibility. Aristo's going to generate impact fees, and the city can use those impact fees to pay for it.
Other questions for Mr. Marshall or Ms. Post?
Do you like to address the access, the street?
Yes, I can. And I kind of did not even talk about this, but I'll talk about the turn lane, or the full-access movement. That's going, I think, the city may say, well, what's going to make them ever install that driveway? They never install that driveway, they'll never have the turn lane requirement. This is the only full access into the apartment project. And so, if they want, they don't want to have a dead corner of their apartment project where nobody wants to get to, they'll, they will install this full-access intersection. And so, that is really, if that turn lane is going to be required, then having that triggered onto the requirement of, when that intersection is constructed, then that turn lane would be required by Aristo.
Chobe?
Mr. Marshall, Ms. Post, thank you very much for coming forward. You cleared up some things, and you muddied the water a little bit, too, but there was a conversation by Mr. Hendrickson and staff about phasing and not seeing phasing. And the conversations that we've had about this is, this is a long-term, multi-year project. Can you explain, is there phasing? Why was phasing not considered when you presented the plan? As you just pointed out, that won't, that full-access point won't happen for a while now. That would sound like a second phase or additional phase. Why was that?
Well, I think, looking at the original application, and the original preliminary plat for Waterford Estates Drive, did not have a public roadway where this blue line is shown. Okay? That was a, it was a private roadway. Our first applications, and even this, this figure, that Steve had shown to try to, we show apartments being put onto a private roadway, parking. And when we got the staff report, it was a condition of approval that, that South Road be public, because the city recognized that that would be a thoroughfare to this saucy property and to Southeast Community College. So, I would say that is something that the applicant gave up, and they pushed off the right of way, they pushed off their parking, and lost some parking onto that roadway to accommodate that condition. So, from the phasing perspective...
So, first, do we clarify the difference between these two? I think we did it pretty quickly, just to make sure that's clear. When you look at this, this is an updated site plan that accommodates having a public roadway. So, that's where you can see that there is this drive here, and then there's this second, this is the public driveway, the public, I'm sorry, public street?
Public street.
Thank you. Okay. This is the public street. And so, that's the difference that we wanted to point out here, is that there is this, this, what would be a driveway. I keep looking at Brad to make sure I don't use driveway.
On your property?
On our property. It's a driveway, and so that's why there's parking on either side. You can't have parking on either side of a street. And so, that's where there would be public street, 33 feet wide, and then there would be a driveway here, and then the request is to have the right of way available, and still leave this as space for a public street, should one become necessary. But so, there would be the ability, that there would be the area to have a road, to have that public street here, and also this second drive. So, anyway.
Let's stick with that for just a second. So, the private drive on private property with parking teed into it, 90-degree angles on both sides, and then the space between that and the blue line is for potential roadway, or green space? Yes?
The street, the blue and green space here is the public, potential public street. Green is proposing to build now, blue is proposing, 27 feet, proposing not to be built yet.
And the space between your private and that blue is?
Green space. Green space, parking, the driveway.
Thank you. Sorry. Still don't feel like I got an answer to my phasing question. Why not?
Well, when we were, when we were looking at it, we don't typically do a whole lot of phasing from apartment projects.
Okay.
We always guess wrong. And a lot of times, we do control that through the way that we file plat those properties. So, Aristo is doing one at 40th and Yankee Hill right now. They're on like their third final plat, and so they're phasing north to south on that one. And there was a trigger for a connection through that development that was agreed upon, but here's the same thing. We're kind of saying the same thing, is, when we connect, and those trips are being generated to the apartment complex, then, then that turn lane, you know, if it's not constructed, or there's no other plans, could be warranted if the council finds that the turn lane is necessary.
Yeah, and so, to add to that, for example, like Mr. Marshall mentioned, there's the flexibility with the commercial on the east side and the residential throughout the rest. That was built in, and with the flexibility to turn that commercial into residential, because as the last few years have taught us, no one can predict what the market is going to do, and the market is going to demand, as you look at a build-out over, you know, six to 10 years. And so, to provide that flexibility. The issue with the phasing plan is that it limits your flexibility, because it says what you're going to build and when. And so, that's where, and as, as staff did mention, that's where generally, you don't see a phasing plan for a project of this size because of that, because it limits the flexibility. That's where we felt this trigger for that full access, of that full-access driveway on Waterford Estates Drive was a sufficient trigger, given the layout of the streets, given the trip, trip generation was an adequate trigger to trigger that without having a phasing plan.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any further questions? Counselor Beckus?
Yes, Ms. Post, or Mr. Marshall, could you discuss, going back to the, I think it was the basis of the, based off of the preliminary plat, the conversion, if you will, from a private road there on the south side to a public road? What did the preliminary plat show at that location when we were talking about it being a private road originally?
Oh, the preliminary plat showed, I should say this conceptually, it did show a private roadway through there. This was designated in, in the comprehensive plan, it's all commercial area. We showed, conceptually, through
We showed, conceptually, through the rest of the property of Waterford Estates Drive, how that would conceivably connect to Southeast Community College to the west, the property, you know. So we always have to show that interconnectivity. So, conceptually, there were roadways shown as private roadways.
So then, at that point in time, Waterford Estates Drive was going to be the east-west connector, if you will, or was there another connector running east-west, determined at that time that maybe now is not in place because of the site, or the parcels in particular? Or what was the east-west connection, if you will?
Waterford Estates Drive would have been the half-mile connector.
Nothing at the border?
I think that roadway, even more confusing, was public, and that did continue as a public roadway to the west. So...
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions for Ms. Post or Mr. Marshall?
No.
Thank you both so much.
Thank you.
Council have any question for any other?
I may have questions for staff.
Okay.
Yeah.
Who would you like? We'll start with Councilwoman Washington.
I'd like to talk with Mr. Hendrickson. And I'd like you, Mr. Hendrickson, to go back to the original plat, so go back in time, when this was, when this was one large project. So originally, Waterford Estates is laid out, I think that Mr. Marshall answered one of the questions that Mr. Beckis just asked, but when Waterford was first laid out, this area that we're talking about was determined, it was going to be a later phase. And would you explain the roadways, and who was going to own the road, who was responsible for the roadways?
So this is using the current plan. So Waterford Estates, when it laid out, they're very large area. This area here was just shown in concept. So I don't agree with Brad that this was agreed to as private roadways. There were some streets that were shown on here, there was the one that was shown on the south. There was Waterford Estates Drive, which, in that original concept, actually kind of bent and came down here. And again, this was going to be a commercial area, that could have been 400,000 or 500,000 square feet of commercial space. So this area was just shown in concept. It wasn't labeled "public street," "private roadway." It just showed some streets, and it showed a street that was coming down in this location that went right through a floodway. And so it was all shown in concept, and so the preliminary plat that is not in front of you, that's still at Planning Commission, is trying to amend that original preliminary plat to now show these streets here, which are generally about where they were shown before, other than maybe this northern one didn't go right behind these houses, there's a little buffer strip in between there. But generally, this street on the south was shown, and our expectation, but it wasn't labeled on there, was it'd be a public street. When this use permit was submitted, they actually showed a driveway. They didn't show a private roadway. They showed, "This is a driveway, this is a driveway, and this is a driveway." And staff said, in talking with Lincoln Fire and Rescue and Building Safety and ourselves, we couldn't recommend approval of this use permit at all if the only thing that was served was driveways, which would have meant all the traffic from over here would have had to go through the driveway of the apartment complex, which we realized in the long term, the apartment complex would probably object in the long term that all of this traffic is driving down their driveway that they maintain, but yet everyone in the rest of this development is using their driveway. So we said, listen, and so it wasn't, they were losing the ability to have a driveway. Any subdivision standard would have required this to be a public street day one. It should have been designed as a public street day one, because you're going to have other traffic going down that public street. Their comment was, "Well, Southeast Community College said that was okay with them." Well, I don't think Southeast Community College also understood that if this was a private roadway, that means Southeast Community College gets to maintain the street, not the city of Lincoln. And there's a lot of pluses to Southeast Community College, to us maintaining the public street, rather than it being them doing that, as well as it wasn't taking into account that the Shriners' traffic, whoever develops this, would also be going on this street. So, and I think, though Thomas Schaefer with LTU and Brad and I aren't all sure of the facts, but I think when this right turn lane, the city decided not to put it in, it was because we had yet to have a change of zone come forward for the 400,000 or 500,000 square feet of commercial space. The right-hand turn lane could be addressed then. But Brad is correct. At the time, the city built 98th Street, we didn't put in the right-hand turn lane. Access management would have required it, but it wasn't put in. My guess is because we were waiting for this big commercial development, but I don't have records or anything that shows that.
Well, and I can add quickly, the annexation three, which covers that north half, and I'm quoting, "On behalf of the city, the developer has designed competitively bid and constructed in front of the grading of the north section." And so the developer was heavily involved with the design of this project. So there probably are some past conversations, but it was just city construction of this north half. So I think it's been painted as, oh, well, the city just took care of the whole north half, and we, at a previous time, elected to not construct the southbound right turn lane, but I think that's misleading to say that, well, the developer that was involved with this is, you know, had a lesser part in that discussion of doing a right turn lane back then.
I would note that's the developer who is selling the property to this applicant, not this one.
Other questions for city staff? Okay. Seeing none, thanks so much. Ms. Post and Mr. Marshall, would you like to provide a rebuttal to that, since you're the applicant?
I think there's probably a agree-to-disagree, probably on the roadway types. We were actually involved with a fire station that is basically going the opposite direction off of Boathouse Road, in which no public street was required, public access was granted basically off, and there are three commercial lots there, fire station and then two other ones. So no public roadway was required to the east when the city developed the fire station on that corner with Waterford Estates Drive.
Could you show that on a map, please?
Yeah, absolutely.
And could you say that again?
Okay. So, this is... So 98th Street, and then Boathouse Road. So this is the original kind of base of Waterford Estates preliminary plat. And Waterford Estates Drive comes in, and it tees, and then it heads south, and then it heads northwest, where the Aristo site is right here. So to the south, on this corner, is the fire station at this location. And then there's two additional commercial lots to the south. As far as I can remember back, as far as Waterford is concerned, Boathouse Road always dead-ended into a right-of-way. That's not really here or there, because Aristo agreed, I guess, they conceded, they said, "Okay, if the city wants a public street to the west, we're going to adapt our site plan to accommodate that public street." What is conceivably done has created other problems, though. It's created problems for addressing and upfront development costs. We did a quick takeoff for what that cost is for the development in first phase, if they were required, it's a half a million dollars for the public roadway. To me, just from a procedural, or where this has gone, is, this is something that is typically done by the development. They put in the public roads, they sell apartment, apartment ground. But what has happened here is Aristo has looked at this B2 area, they've purchased this from Waterford, where they kind of thought, well, we're getting these private roadways, public access, might utilize some of that space. That space has been now turned into right-of-way, setbacks, green space, to set off those apartments a little bit further. So I think from, if I had somebody from Aristo up here saying this, as we develop this, you know, their performance is going to build and build through their phases of development to help pay for some of these off, I'll call them offsites, because really, this roadway does not essentially contribute too much to the overall development plan of the apartments.
So what I wanted to clarify is just to kind of give road map, because we're in the unique situation where this is the voting session, where we're having this discussion. So to clarify kind of the questions that we're asking for some direction on and answer to are, first, should the developer pay for the turn lane? Prefer you say no. If you say yes, should the construction of that turn lane be delayed or not be triggered until there is that, the full-access driveway on the west side of the project? So that delays construction of the turn lane until the apartment project would generate, would actually, people accessing the apartment project would actually be able to use that turn lane to access the project, for crude summary. So that's the second question. Then the third question, it has to do with the roadway on the south side of the project. Should the developer be required to, or can the developer build a portion of that public roadway now to access and dedicate, just dedicate the right-of-way for the rest of it? Okay, so those are the three questions we're looking for direction on, and that will determine if we go, and we can go, if we need to go to Waterford and ask for it, and work with them to get a agreement for reimbursement from impact fees. So there's the question on, do we build the turn lane? Timing of the turn lane, and then on that south, public street on the south side of the project.
Tom?
So your client has not closed on this land?
Correct. Well, we are closed into escrow right now, waiting approvals on zoning.
Councilwoman Joe?
Yes, sir, I'm done.
Ms. Post, thank you. So direction from us would come in the form of a vote, or there was some conversation many hours ago about maybe, I like Brad's response to that one, about maybe taking some more time, which, how do you define direction from us?
Direction from you? First, we prefer you to say, "We don't have to build the turn lane," and vote on that, and, you know, just adopt our motion to amend. Assuming that that's not the case, I think that the developer would be, if there is a delay, we'd ask that it be a one-week delay to give time to have that preliminary discussion about the annexation agreement amendment. I think that that would give some confidence to planning about how that conversation goes with Waterford. I also know that we have some constraints with the purchase agreement, and so that would be, that would give us time to work out some of those details, to come in. Once you give us the direction, and we know which way this is going, that gives us time to work out some of, one week to work out some of those details. I understand that's putting a strain on the law department. I also think I'm going to end, I'm the biggest person that's committing to that right now. And so a lot of that will fall on my plate, to get that pushed ahead and to be able to get you something in the next week.
It sounded like she wants to vote, and sounded like she wouldn't mind if we waited and voted. I got a little confused on that one.
I would love you to adopt our first motion to amend. If you determine not to do that, we'd love you to adopt our second motion to amend. If you feel that it's necessary to have more of a conversation about an annexation agreement, a one-week delay, we'd ask not to delay more than one week, because we have pressures on our property acquisition, and so it will be, fall in my court to make sure that we see progress in that one week.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Washington?
That was very clear, Ms. Post.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have one more clarifying question for you. The South Road, are you looking for impact fee on that as well?
And I...
Is there any caveat on that?
The public roadway along the south side is not impact fee-eligible.
It's not, only arterial street improvements are impact fee-eligible, and this is a local street.
Because it is a local roadway. Unless we're changing policy tonight on some things.
No.
Okay.
Not from the DAS. Thank you very much. Yeah, thank you very much.
Other questions?
No, but I, do you have anything? I'm happy to make a motion.
I'm sorry. Well, what's your motion going to be?
Go ahead. Go ahead.
So what I'm hearing you say, because I'm just, I'm trying to get this, your preference in this order would be to adopt the first motion, adopt the second motion, and if we're not cool with that, you would like to do a week delay?
Correct.
Okay.
I would move that we delay for one week.
I'll second that.
I want to give you some direction, and staff some direction as well, as to what I think I would like to see, and I don't, I'll let my peers state what they might like to see as well. On the turn lane issue, I think I would, if, I think phasing makes sense. I would love for both parties to get to an understanding as to what phasing means, and get to that agreement. I think the, I am fine with a secondary position when it comes to impact fee reimbursement for that turn lane, and however, you need to work that out with Waterford Estates LLC, great. On the South roadway, even though it's a local street, it'll still be an expensive street to build. I would be interested in hearing, because your client has not closed on that ground yet, I think it's reasonable for anyone coming in to that position that your client's currently I think it's reasonable for the city to ask, potentially for that road to be built regardless of the user. So I think that's also a discussion for your client to have with the developer that's selling the parcel as well. I would be interested to know the outcomes of those discussions, because I think that that's going to sit with anyone who comes along and purchases this ground. I don't think it's unique to your particular user or client. So those are my thoughts. I don't know if my fellow council members have other ideas.
One, there's the motion on the floor to one-week delay, which I think is wise, so that you have the opportunity to negotiate with the other LLC. I also believe that the South Road, for reasons of just access, because without the right-hand turn lane coming from the north, you really are forcing everyone who's going to be utilizing these apartments in on that roadway. And I think for safety reasons, I think the fire and police have been very clear about the need to have, for having good access and addresses. And so I think the South roadway has to happen, and I wish roads were cheaper. That doesn't help you, my wish about that. So I'm willing to delay a week so that you can negotiate the right-hand turn lane impact fee assessment, like how they get allocated, but I won't be waiving the right-hand turn lane.
I concur with Councilwoman Washington that, yes, you have to build that right turn lane, and yes, you have to build the South Road, and yes, I'd like to see you work it out with the developer on the timing of it as well, and the appropriate financing tool, the bonding, to be able to pay for it, or how you're going to work out impact fees, but I want something concrete that says, I just, all the developments I've ever seen is that if that road, if that possible future public road abuts your property, you got to build it. I mean, it's just, I haven't seen anywhere where it hasn't happened, that you can avoid that responsibility. The timing of it, yes, as long as you have the appropriate finance, impact fees, whatever, all lined up.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
I think it's fair to ask to look towards something from a phasing perspective.
I think it's fair to ask to look towards something from a phasing perspective. Um, the difficulty here, I guess, the question will be this, is it fair to ask the city to recognize that there's another landholder to the west that is going to do something? They rezoned public tonight, they don't pay impact fees, it doesn't probably all ma-, make a whole lot of sense for Southeast Community College to build a turn lane if they were to precede before Aristo. So I guess, the question is, would the ci-, would it be fair to ask the city to build that turn lane, because it's warranted if Southeast Community College came in and made, uh, made those increase of trips prior to Aristo through their phasing plan?
Mr. Henrickson, would you like to provide a response to that?
Steve Henrickson at the Planning Department. Um, so, no, I, I wouldn't. Uh, I think that's really something you would have to discuss with L T U, because you'd be asking L T U potentially within the next 12 months to build a right-hand turn lane using funds from something. So that would be out of other wheel tax or other funds. So it's really, it'd be better, and I'm, that has not been asked, so I, I think that'd be something they would need to have a week to respond to. So that's a better question probably for L T U. And if, if you're gonna say the city has to do it, and not only the city has to do it, but now we have to time it to when Southeast Community College makes the extension of Waterford Estates Drive.
Did you come in to respond, or is this a coincidence? Does that answer your question, Brad?
I bet it does.
Okay. Councilman Ward?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just, um, would like to offer that I think philosophically it is, it's fair to ask. Um, I don't know that there's a definitive answer either today, especially based on Mr. Henrickson's response, which I understand. But I do think it's fair to ask, it's always fair to ask. Um, I don't know that we would have an answer anyway. Um, but, Mr. Marshall, I, I think that's a fair question. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
We currently have a motion to delay for a week on the table that was moved by Councilwoman Beckus, seconded by Councilwoman Washington. Is there any other further discussion from the council on that? Councilman, uh, Shob?
I think, I think Councilman Beckus' motion to delay was an attempt, also an attempt to give some direction that the applicant was asking for. And so I'm a little concerned about, the city has a great need to build infrastructure for our growing nature, and we keep trying to find money to pay for that infrastructure, and sometimes, who gets there first gets stuck with it. And I'm, I hope we can find a different solution to this, because we need to, it's, yeah. If you got here first, you paid for it, and the next guy gets to benefit from it, but just because you got there first. And that's, that'll stifle growth if we don't watch that carefully. I'm hoping that a week worth of talking about this can come up with a King Solomon-type solution. I'm, I'm scared.
Any further discussion? You've already answered this, but I just need it for my own head, because I have a lot of words in my head right now. One-week delay is not gonna, uh, you guys are cool with a one-week delay, it's not gonna mess you over with contracts or buying or, okay, cool. Any further discussion?
No.
Okay, seeing none, um, may we please call, or the role on Councilwoman Beckus' motion to delay for one week?
McGuinness?
He's abstaining.
Excuse me, abstained. Ward?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Beckus?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried six-zero.
Thank you.
If we can bring Richard back.
You got it.
Okay. Can we have? Oh, I can hold it.
Okay, our next section on our agenda is Section Eight, Resolutions First Readings, our items eight A through eight F. Section nine is our ordinance's first reading and related resolutions, items nine A through nine G. Section 10 is our pending list, date certain, items 10 A through 10 F.
And tonight is an open microphone session for public comment. Anyone wishing to address the council on a matter not on this agenda and not a plan to appear on a future agenda may do so at this time. Individuals are allowed a total of five minutes to speak regardless of the number of topics. Uh, please come up and state your name and your address. Is there anyone that would like to address the council at this time?
Hello?
Hi, uh, my name's Casey Ogil, and I'm, uh, the staff attorney for Collective Impact Lincoln. Collective Impact Lincoln is a partnership between Nebraska Appleseed and Civic Nebraska that, um, works to build neighborhood community, develop neighborhood leaders, and take action on policy that's responsive to their needs. Um, C I L began its work by knocking on doors, talking to our neighbors, learning about, um, what they find important, what they like about their neighborhood, and what they need to see improved. Um, through those conversations, we learned that access to adequate and affordable housing is among the top concerns for Lincolnites. For that reason, we work to increase access to, um, adequate and affordable housing. I wanted to sort of give that little introduction there, because it's been a while since we've been before you and talked to you, and, um, I just wanted to come before you today to say and remind you that we're still here, and we're still advocating for increased access to affordable and adequate housing. And we have three policies that would address each of those issues, access, adequacy, and affordability. First, access. Um, we know that housing is really difficult to find for many of our neighbors, um, especially our neighbors who would use a housing voucher to pay for their rent in part. Um, we can help ensure that they're able to find a unit that would accept their housing voucher by passing a source-of-income anti-discrimination law. Second, uh, adequacy. We know that several of our neighbors, uh, too many of our neighbors continue to live in rental units that do not currently meet a existing city housing code. Uh, this seriously impacts their health. One thing that we can do to ensure that these rental units, uh, meet city housing code is to adopt a proactive internal rental inspection scheme. Third, affordability. We know that half of our neighbors who rent cannot afford their living situation, um, and rents continue to rise, and still, um, the city invests public funds in luxury apartment complexes. One thing that we can do to ensure that affordable housing is being built is to adopt an inclusionary zoning scheme. This, um, inclusionary zoning ordinance would require a certain percentage of units to be set aside as affordable anytime a housing developer, um, builds housing. And an important first step toward an inclusionary zoning ordinance is a feasibility study. Feasibility studies look at previous developments, market conditions, and determine what percentage of units we can set, we can require to be set aside as affordable, and still maximize, or and still ensure that development is profitable. Um, these three action items, a proactive rental inspection scheme, a source-of-income anti-discrimination ordinance, and a feasibility study are all included in the Affordable Housing Coordinated Action Plan. The city invested significant time, resources, energy, uh, into that plan, and it diagnosed our housing situation and prescribed, um, things that we need to do to ensure, first, that our existing affordable housing doesn't deteriorate to the point of condemnation, and, second, that we continue to build affordable housing that helps us reach those benchmarks set by the Affordable Housing Plan, um, to ensure that we're building additional affordable housing. Um, there's been some efforts and some movement, uh, done on the Affordable Housing Plan, uh, to ensure that there's cost-sharing mechanisms and an affordable housing consortium, but additional efforts need to be made, um, to ensure that we are taking these proactive steps-
One minute.
Thank you, to increase affor-, access to adequate and affordable housing. We can't, uh, rely on developers who built us into this situation to build us out of it as well. We need to take additional steps to ensure that more is being done. Um, yeah, that's, that's it for me. I, we really, those three policies can make a huge difference, and we'd like to see them advanced. And so, uh, I intend to be here more often to continue to raise this issue, um, and thank you for your time.
So much. Are there any questions from the council?
Thank you.
So much.
Hi. My name's Liz Shay McCoy, and, um, I'm here on behalf of a small group of dedicated individuals who are trying to save the Pershing mural. And this is my friend Joel Sartori behind me. Um, I can see him on my peripheral vision. Um, we actually, um, the reality that the wrecking ball was going to, uh, not only demolish Pershing, but also the beautiful mural, uh, I think became a reality to me, to me last spring. And I know that this has been under discussion for a long time, but sometimes you need a wrecking ball to kind of jar yourself a little bit to say, wait a minute, gotta stand up for this mural. It's a part of Nebraska's history, it's a Nebraska icon, and it's a amazing piece of Nebraska art. Both of those artists that created the design of that mural are represented in Mona in Carney Museum of Nebraska Art. Um, when it was built, it was the largest mural at that time. There's over 700,000 one-inch tiles in that mural. It's not only a beautiful collage of cultural activities, and I'm, I, when I say cultural, it's sports, but it's also ballroom dancing, Romeo and Juliet on the balcony scene. The problem with that mural is it's too high up. It needs to be brought down. As a visual arts educator, that mural could be a, be a springboard for arts educators across the state of Nebraska. So, we, when I began working with the city on this, the first thing we needed to find out, we had a feasibility study, which proved that the mural could be safely removed from the front of the building, and there was no asbestos within the mural. Now, that was huge for us because, uh, for both reasons. Uh, we, no one would want the mural if there was asbestos in it, so. So, um, once we found that out, we hired, uh, M T Z Contractors LLC to take care of the work necessary. It's a three-phase project to safely remove the mural from the front of Pershing. That in itself would be a million dollars. The second phase of the project is cleaning each one of those one-inch towels, tiles to remove all the, you know, uh, what do you put, how do you make a mural?
Adhesive?
What?
Adhesive?
Adhesive, thank you. And then replace the areas, the parts of the mural that are missing from the mural. The third phase of the mural, of this project, is to reinstall the mural in a public location in Lincoln. We've been working with the Lancaster Event Center, uh, over the, these many, many months. They are also working on a redevelopment project to really spruce up that area. And Eighty-Fourth Street needs a splash of color, let's face it. It's the entryway off of I-80 for thousands and thousands of cars, and the first thing those cars would see on the south side of the Lancaster Event Center is that mural. So now, it represents part, a lot of things that go on at the Lancaster Event Center. There's rodeo, there's, there's the county fair, there's a multitude of activities, but it also has the lines and the Nebraska topography built into the mural. People have suggested, you know, when you take on a big project, and as you guys, as you know, as city leaders, you get lots of suggestions all the time of what you could do and what could be. You, but we cannot separate those images from the mural itself, because the Nebraska lines, the states on either side, the rivers, um, the Oregon Trail, they're all built into that mural.
One minute.
I just have to say one more thing. We started this grassroots effort to raise three million dollars on March first. We're working with the Nebraska State Historical Society Foundation. Since March first, we have received 154 donations totaling over $17,000. We have a pledge for a million dollars, oh, sorry, gosh, I wish. We have a pledge for, sorry, whoa, oh, we have a pledge for over $100,000. Um, what we need is time. You know, two months is a lot of time. If we could just raise that first million to take down the mural, then we could buy some time for the last $2 million. And I know we can do this. So, I'm gonna let my friend behind me, Joel.
I'm so glad that it's only five minutes, you can talk.
Good job holding that up.
Cross Liz, make sure that- Uh, Joel Sartori, 2733 Sheridan Boulevard. I'm helping Liz tonight, just to try to, it's okay, Liz, they've seen it, I bet. Um, so the, the mural's a big deal, and it's gonna end up, I actually had a city leader say, well, none of you guys, lower level, say, well, you know, uh, I think it'd be great if we, uh, the ship has sailed, is the number one thing I heard from this city administrator, the ship sailed. We've decided we're gonna bulldoze it. Hasn't sailed yet, it's still up. You guys have the power to stop the ship dead in its tracks and turn it around if you want. Everything he said was, well, I think it'd be great if we just made a rubble pile and souvenirs could be taken. People could take pieces of it home and do art projects with it. Not the best idea in the world. This one that was built was the largest mosaic tile mural in the western hemisphere, 140 by 38 feet long. We can do something big here. It's fun, it's bright, it's colorful. Imagine a million selfies a year taken in front of that, blasting out to the world through the internet. It'd be a, it'd be a colossal thing that we could do with this, but she needs more time to raise the money. She's gotten commitments for over $100,000 in two weeks. Everybody likes her, everybody will donate. It'd be great if the city could donate to this, it'd be fantastic. Once she gets it off the building, all 763,000 tiles, that buys her time, and she can find the money to do the rest. But the options are just three. You do nothing and it goes to the landfill. Some big donor I'm gonna be talking to tomorrow might wanna take it to Omaha. We might need to ask for the rights to take this piss, piece of, piss, to take this piece of Lincoln history to Omaha. Well, it would be a, it would be a, would that be the best thing, to take Lincoln's history to Omaha? There's several people interested in it, and they've got big money. Or it could go to the landfill. Gee, Liz, wouldn't that be a shame? Couldn't you do something noble and great that would far outlast all of us? Think about that. Wouldn't that be awesome? We think it would be, we think it's worth your consideration, and we don't think it's too late. We don't think that ship has sailed, do we, Liz? Nope. That's it.
Councilwoman Irby? Any questions?
Yes. Um, could you tell us a little bit about the, the timeline that is being proposed, or what is the amount of time you need for a delay? Is it a delay in the demolition? Is it?
Well, we've been working with Hallie Salin in the Urban Development Department on, on the city's timeline. It was our understanding that, um, we had, it's gonna take the contractor two months to take down that mural, so, because it's our understanding that they wanna rope off Pershing in June, or early summer, or sometime this summer, to take off the, take out the asbestos first. And then, once they get the asbestos removed, then they'll take down the building.
Asbestos in the inside of the building, right?
Correct.
Nothing to do with the tile, but what she's saying is, when they rope it off, they start demolishing the building. It's over. Right?
Right.
I'll translate.
That's good. So, that's why we, we are really up against this- So, that's why we, we are really up against this incredible deadline with the city. And if, and one thing, the head of urban development.
Dan Marvin.
He said, what did he say? He said he didn't wanna leave a hole in the ground, you know, unless, he didn't, he doesn't wanna take the building down unless they're ready to put the next building, what, the, the next building up. So, is that building gonna be ready to go up so that they can down, take down Pershing? Do we have some time to raise that great amount of money? I mean, even if we, and I'm asking these questions just kind of, because if we could raise that million, okay, then we can save the mural. And then, once it's saved, it'll become a reality to these donors who are across the city. The donations have been between $5 and $1,500, and that person that donated $5, that was about, I was grateful for that donation. So, I'm just asking, if, if urban development isn't ready to take down that building, could we have a little bit more time to raise the money? That's basically what I'm asking for.
Any other questions from the council? I have one question. So, if it costs a million dollars to take down, and then that would give you the time to raise the other funding, how will it be stored? Like, is there like a safe way to store it? Is there already like a location?
Yes.
Talk to me a little bit about that.
Mike McCullough's our contractor. He has a warehouse. He has promised, I mean, he's like, he called me right off the bat and said, Liz, I was born when Pershing, he's gonna not like me to say that. I was born when that Pershing mural went up, and I, I would like to support this project, never thinking he would ultimately end up as our contractor. But he has the warehouse, he, he has our, the commitment that we have made for this mural in his heart, too. So, it's more than a business deal with him and with the people that are supporting this. It's a Nebraska icon that we're trying to save.
They put contact, in other words, they put contact sheet adhesive on the front, remove it in small sections that can be palletized and stored indoors. Although, being outdoors would just degrade the contact sheet and keep them together. Doesn't really hurt the tile, the tile or glazed mosaic. So, basically, it's stored indoors on pallets until we're ready to put it up at the new site.
Okay, that's helpful information. In my mind, I was thinking if it got taken down and there wasn't a place to put it at.
Yeah, it's not gonna come down piece by piece. It's gonna come down section by section. There's been a lot of reporting in the newspaper, and, and I think there's some mixed messages, but basically, section by section with contact paper, kind of, that's the way I look at it, to hold those pieces together.
Councilwoman Washington?
How long does the contractor need to take it down?
Two months.
Two months?
Two months.
Okay.
And he'd like to start now when the weather's nice.
What's preventing him from starting?
Well, I don't have a million dollars.
But she's only been at it since the first month, and she's got, she's got commitments for.
I've only been at it for a few weeks, and I guess the way I start any of my public art projects is by lots of press releases, and so, people are talking about this. People understand, they know about the three phases and the $3 million. But basically, what I figured out, if we had a million dollars, then we could save the mural. It could come down, and the city can go forward with, whenever it's ready, to take down Pershing, 'cause we know that's a reality. We just don't want the loss of Pershing mural to become another reality, so.
Any other questions? I have another question. Feel free to not answer this publicly and send it in an email if that's more comfortable. Does your group have experience fundraising? Does your group have experience, like, is, is a million dollars a realistic goal? How's that? Have you had success in raising that amount of money before?
Well, I've been fundraising for about 20-some years, and I, in my public art projects, I'm always seeming to go around with my hand out, but you know what? When people see me coming, they know my heart's into this, so I think that's okay, 'cause what I'm doing is making the city, through the arts, a better place to live. We're working with the Nebraska State Historical Society Foundation, and Leslie Fattig is their executive director, and she's an experienced fundraiser. Our grant is complete, now we're ready to send it out. The problem with grants is it takes sometimes six months to get, you know, the funds back, and you also have to work within their schedule. So, we are kind of this entity out there trying to raise this money, but not on a schedule, except.
Well, it's not just the grant, though. It's lots of private donations as well.
Oh, gosh, yes.
And corporate donations as well.
You were asking about the, I thought, more of the fundraising, the big grants kind of thing?
You know, I think fundraising is definitely a unique skill, and I think people think it's a lot easier than what it is, so I was just kind of interested to hear if your group had a history of fundraising and had, you know, the experience doing it. What I'm hearing you say is that you've had over 20 years of fundraising experience, so, so you know what, you know what you're getting into.
Oh, I, I jumped in with both feet, and then I thought, oh, my gosh, 'cause I wasn't gonna do any more public art projects, but this mural is the biggest public art project I've ever taken on, but it's important.
Liz, you did the, the, the public art sculpture projects as well, right? Starting with the bicycles?
Mm-hmm.
The light bulbs, all that. She's the, she's the Art Doian of Lincoln. She's it.
I have to look up that word. I didn't know what that word was.[1302.44][1302.44](Laughter)
It means grand.
What?
It means grand.
Okay.
A grand person.
Well, Joel, thank you for being here.
You're welcome.
Thank you for this time and for your support, and we kind of look at this as an economic development project, just in case. I just thought I'd throw that in.
How many jobs do you think this will generate and create?
Okay, let me, let me do a segue on that one, Joel.
Well, it's not, it's not just the jobs. I, we, we probably have no idea how many jobs the contractor would use, but once it goes in, wouldn't that be a magnet for people? Because it'd be eye-level, and there's nothing this mammoth in the city for everybody to gather round, to have concerts, events, and the selfies, the ever-present selfies. I wanted to say one other thing, too. I'm into a council meeting a number of years. Listen to that, listen to that Turn Lane talk. I felt like I was on a raft at sea with no ship on the horizon.[1357.24][1357.24](Laughter) I really appreciate what you guys do. I cannot imagine doing what you guys do. I cannot imagine it, man. So, thanks, thanks for it. It's, uh, something.
Thank you for waiting.
You bet.
Any further questions? Thank you both so much for coming down.
Thank you all.
Thanks, Liz.
Bye.
Come on up. Either or, either Mike.
Hi there. Hi, my name's Walter Russell. I'm homeless. And the reason I'm here tonight, I wrote this down, I get kind of nervous.[1396.51][1396.51](Laughter) My name is Walter Dean Russell. I grew up in the great town of Wilbur, Nebraska. Graduated class of '94. I'm 47 years old. I've never been, or I have been married, been a homeowner, and owned my own business, and helped start up businesses in my community and here in Lincoln. I say that all to give you the idea that I feel I have earned the right to stand before you all and present this. I am truly disgusted and appalled at how Lincoln has become towards the homeless and the resources to help the homeless. I'm sure we're all aware of the People City Mission, Matt Talbot's Kitchen, Homeless Outreach. We also have Catholic Community Services, Lutheran Family Services, Center of People in Need, Helping Hands on 68th and 0, et cetera, et cetera. All these places are great, and I'm grateful for them being there. As to other than, other than food and a smile for a single male, all these places don't offer really anything. I am just as important with or without a wife and kids. In fact, there's only one of me, so it should be less of a burden. Yes, I am in the spot due to bad decision-making. Since I have made a turnaround, and now I find myself in need of help, and as you can see from these pictures that I sent you all, maybe you guys had some time to look over. Sorry, they're not the best of pictures as I feel that they should have been. Okay, uh, okay. City Mission is disgusting and unacceptable. We need hope, not three hot meals and told shut up. I agree, there's a lot of riffraff, but it does that, but does that constitute me living in filth with mice, cockroaches, and bedbugs? If they want to help the homeless, then start and quit putting us on a shelf like canned goods, waiting for our expiration date. At Matt Talbot's and the People City Mission, the attitude they give the public is wonderful and so great and hopeful, hopefully, or gives hopeful, it gives inspiration as they perceive. They want the public to believe. Not true. It's all to get donations, don't know where they go, because I, I keep on hearing, where's the funding? We ran out of funding, we don't have money for that, we don't do, but you see in the pictures, there's no maintenance, there's no preventative maintenance, there's no... Okay, okay. It's all to get donations for the public to feel that there's hope, so the public can sleep at night thinking there's resources. I repeatedly hear, we just don't have the funding, we don't have the resources. Well, then why are the doors open? I'm talking basic general needs, just what you would expect them to offer, nothing more. We are constantly told, if you don't like it, you can leave. There's, that's their go-to. The mission is the last place I would go. If I could leave, I would. We are homeless and not garbage or in jail. What crime have I committed to get my rights taken away as a human? At Talbot's, we are not able to turn on the washer or dryer. I wasn't even able to pour my own coffee today. You get one little packet, one little paper packet of pepper with your meal. One little paper packet, you know? Then that's if you're lucky to get it. No butter on our buns tonight, or for lunch today, you know? There's, this is bigger than that. Okay, and then, okay, and then there's one shower stall for the males and one shower for the women at the Matt Talbot Center. That's a homeless outreach program. That's pretty sad. Two toilets and a urinal. Over here, I see we got four urinals and three toilets and four sinks, which we had that. The last picture is Matt Talbot's resources for landlords. I sent you a picture of the resources that they give you to provide. There's 12 names on that. Lincoln's population is 283,839. There's 12 names on that list, from a homeless outreach center. It's pretty pathetic, out of 300,000 people. As you see most, as you see most, don't deal with felons, evictions, or smoking. Who do they pertain to? That's, that's, that's poverty. That's who get felons, drug abusers, addictions, that's who homeless are, pretty much. I'm not speaking for everyone, I'm speaking, okay? And in the water that I sent you, that discoloration is Dead Man's Run. That drain is coming out of, between Home Depot and Menards in the back there on Dead Man's Run. That is disgusting. EPA needs to go out there and look at that. There's garbage. Now, the great thing, the beauty of being a homeowner, is you get to pick up trash, you get to commode your own lard or yard, and, and you're responsible for your property and upkeep. We have city ordinances to do that. That's the great thing about city, Lincoln owning all that property. I gotta, I gotta hold you guys to the same, you know? If I'm gonna get told to get off your property because I'm trespassing, please hold up your end of the bargain, pick up your trash. Because as a homeowner, I can't go to my neighbors and say, this trash blew over, you need to pick it up. That's not right, that's not it. That's the beauty of being a homeowner, is responsibility. And you go on any oversections or anything like that, it's pathetic. We gotta start taking care of our own, and we're not gonna have any own, you know? We gotta start giving each other hope. I'm, I'm listening to all this money talk and, and all these things, and the mural, beautiful thing. I hope it, the mural stays. I'm a, I'm a ble red. I'm a husker, thick and true, and I need you guys. And, and maybe my son or grandson will need you guys, too, and I want you to be there, but that's all I wanted to say, is somebody to look into this stuff, 'cause we need to be heard. We gotta take care of our own, and we're not right now.
Thank you so much for coming down and getting heard.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the council at this time?
I move adjourn.
Second. Yeah. Did you, did you have something you wanted to say? No, okay, just wanted to make sure. Okay. Moved by Councilwoman Raybold, seconded by Councilman Beckius. Any discussion? Seeing none, may please call the roll.
Raybold?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes. Just making sure I'm here.
Yes. Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven zero.
We stand adjourned. See everyone next week, same time, same place. Oh, not same time, 3 o'clock.
Same place.
Wow.